All right, everyone. Good evening, good evening. It is definitely that time and then plus a few minutes. So we're going to go ahead and call this wonderful school board, December School Board Meeting to order. Very important meeting, as we all know, and happy holidays just from the get-go, starting off. Great to see everybody, full house, and definitely to recognize a lot of our employees here, our guests, teachers, and all the rest that are here that assist our district each and every day and keep us going. We will move on to 2.2, Pledge of Allegiance, and we're going to have our student board member, Jimena Preciado, lead us in the pledge. Jimena.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jimena. Job well done. Moving on to 2.3, Approval of the Agenda.
I move.
Seconded by Ms. Sevayos, seconded by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion of the agenda or items to be pulled? All right, hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote on the agenda. And we'll start with our student board members. Mr. Nunez.
Aye.
Very good. Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
All right, and the rest of us will vote electronically. Thank you. Moving on to 3.0, Annual Organizational Meeting of the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education. 3.1, Election of Officers and Assignment of Other Responsibilities. Education Code 35143 and Board of Education Bylaw 9100 require certain actions with regard to the internal organization of the board. At the annual organizational meeting, appointments will be made for Board President, Board Vice President, Board Secretary, and Assistant Secretary to the Board and Designation of Board Representatives. All right, we'll move on to 3.2, Election of Board President. Board nominations will be made for Board President. For Board Bylaw, the president shall not serve more than two consecutive one-year terms. President Wyatt has served two years. All right, at this time, I will open up the board meeting for nominations of Board President. Ms. Rosales Medina.
I nominate Danny Tillman.
Second.
We had a motion to nominate Vice President Tillman for Board President, seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. Any discussion of the board? All right, hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote. I will start with our student board members. Mr. Nunez.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
All right, board, please vote now.
Can we just do verbal then, because it's not coming up?
All right, I'll start from right to left. I'll start with Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Aye.
Ms. Grande.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt, aye. Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Ms. Sevayos.
Aye.
Ms. Chahusky.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Vice President Tillman, to President Tillman.
Thank you very much.
I think this is quite an honor, because this is the first time, I think, students voted for our board president.
Yes, I was worried.
So that's pretty exciting. Yeah, I know, they're a tough group. I was worried too for you, Mr. Tillman, so congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on to 3.3, Election of Board Vice President.
We'll entertain a motion for Vice President.
Gracias.
I nominate Myra Sevayos.
I second it. Call for the vote. Any other, call for the vote? Students, hear the list. Mr. Nunez. Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
And board, vote, please.
Congratulations, Ms. Sevayos. And we have a beautiful award here for Dr. Wyatt.
It's a trap. You don't want to be board president. I'm just kidding. Well, thank you, President Tillman, you know, for this wonderful recognition, as well as the district and my colleagues and executive board. I really truly appreciate the opportunity to be in Board President, and just want to say thank you to my colleagues on the board and their support and guidance for the last two years. Thank you to all our amazing employees, and thank you to our amazing students. It has definitely been an honor serving as your school board president. When I first joined the school board, I had no idea just how much of an impact being a school board member could have on a community. But after these last eight years on serving on the board, I've come to realize serving on the board comes with the greatest of responsibilities of teaching our children well, preparing them for their future, and keeping them safe. As board president, I know that has been some of our main tenets for our students, families, and community as a board. Fortunately and unfortunately, I was both the president and vice president going through and coming out of COVID. You could probably say we were often the first, if not the first, to make bold decisions on keeping our students and staff safe while offering our students educational and innovative opportunities to learn. Over the past two years, I've had the honor of working with great leaders like Dr. Delmarzen, Dr. Harold Volkmer, Ms. Dr. Irvin, and almost for a year, I was truly fortunate to work and have the support of our executive cabinet as we implemented the administrator-in-charge system of leadership. So thank you to the executive cabinet. The AICs, Anna Applegate, Dr. Funches, Dr. Rodriguez, Mr. Solins, along with Karen Cunningham and Katrin Ballantag, and my colleagues on the board helped guide and lead our district as we put together a solid plan for recruiting and hiring our next San Bernardino City Unified School District Superintendent, which we were able to do with the assistance of McPherson and Jacobson and Mr. Ben Johnson. As a result of our well-coordinated, transparent, equitable process, we were very fortunate to bring home one of our own, Mr. Mauricio Ariano. Thank you, Mr. Ariano, for choosing us. Mr. Ariano has been an incredible colleague and friend throughout my own educational career. I was highly confident we selected the right leader at the right time for our district. So again, thank you for making hope happen for our 47,000 students and think about 8,000 staff, right? So that's quite a responsibility, Mr. Ariano. We're proud to have you here as our superintendent. And since I get to make my comments now, I know this is not a secret anymore, and if you haven't heard this, maybe you haven't been watching TV or listening to news or watching social media, but congratulations to our hometown hero, Mr. Jaden Daniels, our Cajon High School graduate, who was selected this past weekend as Heisman Award winner, which recognized him as the most outstanding college athlete of the year. We look forward to honoring you here in your hometown soon, and we cannot be more proud of any of our students as we are of you. And I know Mr. Ariano and Ms. Roan over there, Mary Roan, have been working with Ms. Jackson, his mother, and he is a very busy young man, as you can imagine, so it's going to be a little bit of time before we get to recognize. I know she was saying, well, maybe before December. I said, oh, good luck on that, right? But, you know, he's probably super busy, so it's going to be towards the middle, end of January. I believe we're going to have a parade right here up in the north end and end up at Cajon High School, which he was hoping for, and yep, go Cowboys! Very emotional moment for me. As many of you know, my daughter was co-captain of the cheerleading squad while he was captain of the football squad, so we went to, been going to games for like eight years, and it's just been an absolutely amazing journey with him. And I know many of you have had that journey with him as well in this district, and I know Mr. Tillman here, President Tillman, has been instrumental in making sure a lot of great things happen for our student athletes, and just, not just during school, but after school and on the weekends, and that's why kids excel in this district. So again, congratulations, Mr. Daniels. We'll be seeing you soon. Can't wait. And last but not least, I want to say thank you to my amazing family, my wife, my children, for being by my side through all this. This is not an easy job and takes all of us away from our families many days a year, along with many late nights. Appreciate your support, and I could not have done it without you. So this time, I look forward, and I'm honored to pass the gavel to our new San Bernardino City Unified School District Board President, Mr. Danny Tillman. President Tillman, thank you for your mentorship, guidance, and support you provided me with. There's much to learn as a board member and even more as a board president. I look forward to supporting you and the rest of our team as we continue to make hope happen for our students for many years to come. It's been an honor to serve you all. Thank you.
I thank you, Dr. Wyatt. You've done a great job. I really appreciate the work that you've done and your leadership. I just want to make one correction. I don't think we finalized the parade route yet or where it's going to end at, so I don't want to commit to that. We're working with the family.
Details to come.
We'll announce it, but I don't want people to say, hey, they said they're going to be at a certain place, because it might not end up being there. It depends on the capacity.
Right, right. It might get crowded, and pass the word once it does come out, because we want to pack wherever that may be, whether it's Cajon Stadium or a bigger place, just to show our appreciation for Mr. Jaden Daniels and his family as well, because it, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, President Tillman, he's the first young man or woman to ever win the Heisman in the Inland Empire, correct?
No.
That I'm aware of.
They went on TV at the ceremony, so I'm sure he is.
Yeah, so I mean, that, you know, we've had, as many of you know that have been in this area a long time, incredible athletes, absolutely incredible athletes come out of this area, and, you know, for me, it's a very emotional moment to see him win that, and again, the recognition that we want to give to him and the celebration, we want to make it world-class. I know we've used that term a few times around here, but it should be a world-class celebration for a world-class young man, so let's show them what San Bernardino City is all about and our district, so I know you'll do that, Mr. Tillman.
Yes, and I just wanted to make it clear that Jaden Daniels is an example and results and proof that when a community invests in our students, then they excel. You know, Jaden happened to play on, my son happened to play on the same team as Jaden and Pop Warner, and everyone knows, because I got in trouble over the years, for making sure that our Pop Warner Junior American Little League teams have access to our school sites. I say all the time, I'd rather see our sites full on the weekend than empty, because that means we're investing in our students, and everyone doesn't understand that. But we fought tirelessly to have them have practice fields and to convince the athletic directors to let them play on the big fields on the weekend so they can use the school board and the fields. A lot of times, they don't realize that those are your future seniors, and Jaden Daniels is a perfect example of that. I made tons of calls to say, let these teams use the fields, not knowing that he and the other players would end up being, well, I did, but a lot of folks not realizing that he and the other players would end up being on our varsity teams and winning championships. So I hope now everybody is convinced that the best thing to do is win these teams that have volunteer coaches, and all they're asking for is access to our empty sites, that we give them to them, because it pays off in the end. So I'm proud, and I know we're going to look forward to the parade.
Thank you, President Tillman. Just, no, I'm on my comments, so I'll pass when my time comes later. You know, we have outstanding students throughout this district in many different areas. Obviously, athletics is Mr. Daniels' primary highlight of his life, being a quarterback and best quarterback in the nation, but we have students that excel in other areas, and I had a really fortunate opportunity to meet with the Hollywood Summit, which is our, we have cinematography department up at Cajon, and see students who graduated in the past and come back, and one of those students was alumni Sandy Wall, who has now worked all over Hollywood, right? Netflix and doing incredible things. I mean, so these are our students, right? These are students that are out there doing amazing things, and then also, so thank you to Cajon and for the invitation to go there and see a number of our students who are working in cinematography now. I would never even thought about that field as a young man or young woman myself, but we have students doing that. And then, again, our Cajon Mock Trial, for those of you that don't know it, they have made it to the semifinals. So, yep. So I want to make sure we're out there supporting them on January 10th and 11th. They're going up against Oak Hills and two Redlands high school programs. Oak Hills, I think maybe it was Oak Hills won it last year, and we know Redlands has won it quite a few times, and we have won it, gone to the state championship. So I believe in our students and our team, and I look forward to them taking them out and going to the finals, so thank you again. Oh, wait, I forgot, that was Mr. Ariano's former district, so I got to be kind of nice to Redlands.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. And we'll maintain the seats that we're in right now until the next meeting, okay? Next up is the appointment of the Board Secretary and Board Assistant Secretary. It's customary that the superintendent serves in that role, so I nominate Mauricio Ariano as the secretary.
I'll second.
Let's vote. We'll start with Mr. Nunez.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
And board, other board members.
President Tillman, you're going to be voting on superintendent and the assistant secretary.
Yes.
Post.
Board Secretary and Board Assistant Secretary. Superintendent will be the Board Secretary, and Karen Cunningham will be the Assistant Secretary. The next item will be Appointment of Designated Board Representatives. The board will make the following board member appointments. The board will vote on all appointments as one action, and I'll make the appointments as the president. Appointment to the, and if, I'm going to read the position, and if you'd like to continue or you'd like to have the opportunity to fill that role, just let me know, and we'll vote on it at the end. So Appointment to the County Committee on School District Organization. This committee has a major role in review and approval of proposals to change school district organization in the county and consists of one board member. Mickey Chahusky has served as a representative for the past year. Mr. Chahusky, do you want to continue?
Yeah.
All right, we'll allow you to continue. So the board appoints Mickey Chahusky for the ensuing 2024 year. Appointments to CSBA Delegate Assembly are for a two-year term. The Delegate Assembly provides a vital link in CSBA's governance structure, providing policy direction and ensuring CSBA reflects the interests of school districts. Based on district average daily attendance, the board is entitled to two delegates. Current delegates are Myra Sevayos and Mickey Chahusky. Ms. Sevayos' term ends on March 31st, 2025. Mr. Chahusky's term ends March 31st, 2024. A delegate is required for a two-year term effective April 1st, 2024. So I guess we know we're going to continue the two-year terms, but are we looking for an appointment after that?
Yes. I completed a term, and I would like to continue so I can have my own term, if possible.
Okay. So you're asking for the appointment for the April 20th.
Yes, because I just completed a term of, I think it was of Dr. Rogers.
So then, and then Myra, you're going to continue, I mean, Ms. Sevayos, you're going to continue yours, right?
Yeah.
So then we're looking for a, I'll make you, I'll appoint you then for the remainder of that term, the new term. And then, Appointment to the District's Policy Subcommittee. This subcommittee meets to review new and updated board policies and consists of three board members and one alternate. Current board member representatives are Abigail Rosales Medina, who has served for the past seven years, Myra Sevayos for three years, and Mary Ellen Grande for one year. Mickey Chahusky is the alternate and has served for one year. Are any changes, are people that want to get added? Yes?
President Tillman, I would like to be added.
Okay. Anybody want to come off? Your alternate, who, you'll come off?
Well, then I can.
Okay.
I'll stay as alternate.
So I have Ms. Alexander take Mrs. Grande's place.
And I can stay as alternate.
And you'll stay as alternate. Okay.
I was just trying to make space.
Appointment to the District's Budget Subcommittee. This subcommittee meets on an as-needed basis and consists of three board members and one alternate. The current board member representatives are Dr. Wyatt, who has served for the past five years, myself, who have served for the past three years, Myra Sevayos for the past two years, and Mickey Chahusky for one year. Abigail Rosales Medina as the alternate has served for two years. Anybody wish to make changes? Is your light on? You want to get on the budget committee?
I'd like to be on the budget committee.
Does anybody want to come off of the budget committee?
I could remove myself as well as an alternate. I don't know if she wants, if that's an opening.
I heard that Mickey and Ms. Sevayos, which one of you guys want to come off? Okay, so Ms. Alexander, you'll take Ms. Sevayos' place?
Thank you.
And the others will stay the same. Appointment to the District's Charter School Subcommittee. This subcommittee meets on an as-needed basis and consists of three board members and one alternate. Current board representatives are Abigail Rosales Medina and Scott Wyatt, who have both served for the past seven years, and Mary Ellen Grande for one year. Myra Sevayos as alternate has served for one year. Would anyone like any changes on that committee?
I can, I can make the change with having Myra Sevayos, if she is interested, instead of being an alternate, serve on the committee, if you're interested in.
Is your light on?
My light is on, because I've never turned it off. However, I sit on that committee already.
You're ready, okay.
Yes.
So the only change is going to be?
I stated, yeah, so we have to have it added.
You're alternate, Sarah. She's not, though. She didn't want to, so. So right now, this would be if you want to switch with, you going to switch with Abigail? Point of order?
President Tillman, now, just with Ms. Alexander, we did kind of like, I think it was either mid-year or somewhere during the year, Ms. Alexander was appointed to some of these subcommittees, we just didn't have it updated on here, so when we get to those, she's going to let us know which ones, if there are any others that she's on.
That is the charter committee. So on the charter committee, I'm actually on the subcommittee, but if there's somebody else who's interested, is that what I'm hearing?
Who's name is on that list is not on there, because you only can have three board members. So right now is Abigail Rosales Medina. Dr. Wyatt, you on there now?
I've been on that one, too.
So who is not on there? Because you only can have three members at a time.
I'd be more than happy to step down.
All right, so Dr. Wyatt has stepped down, so it's going to be Ms. Alexander, Abigail, and Myra? Or is Mary Ellen, are you still on there?
Mary Ellen.
So who's going to be on there? And then, well, right now, it says Ms. Sevayos is the alternate.
Basically, it would be Ms. Sevayos, Mary Ellen, and Felicia.
So you're stepping on.
Yes, I'm stepping.
Okay, that's what it would be, the clarification. And then Appointment of District's Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee. This subcommittee meets on an as-needed basis and consists of three board members. Current board representatives are Myra Sevayos, has served for the past two years, Mary Ellen Grande, and Mickey Chahusky, who have served one year. Scott Wyatt is an alternate and has served for one year. Are there any changes? We'll maintain those appointments.
I would step down as alternate if anybody wants to join that one.
Anyone want to be the alternate? I'm going to allow you to stay there, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, President Tillman.
Appointment to the District's Facility Subcommittee. This subcommittee meets on an as-needed basis and consists of three board members and one alternate. Current board representatives are Dr. Scott Wyatt, who has served for the past seven years, Abigail Rosales Medina has served for two years, and Mary Ellen Grande has served for one year. Mickey Chahusky as alternate has served for one year. Are we going to maintain those positions? Sounds good. And then Appointment to the District's IT Communications Subcommittee. This subcommittee meets on an as-needed basis and consists of three board members. Myself, who has served for the past seven years, Mary Ellen Grande has served for one year, and Mickey Chahusky has served for one year. We're going to maintain that? Sounds good. And then Appointment to the Education Bridge Committee. The subcommittee which has formed by, which was formed by the San Bernardino City currently does not meet. Dr. Wyatt, Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina, and Mary Ellen Grande, and Mickey Chahusky are the current representatives, so if they're not meeting, is it because you guys are bad members, or?
It's the city.
I'll turn on my light there.
The city. I would have to say the city.
Dr. Wyatt. We're not here to point blame at anybody, President Tillman, but I know the four of us are more than ready to meet when our colleagues are ready to meet. And I think we have a golden opportunity right now, as we have our student board members, and I believe they have their student council members. So what a great time for us to bridge our two entities and work together as one in San Bernardino City.
Perfect. So we'll reach out to the city and try to get the Education Bridge Committee more active. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval for the positions we just stated. Motion approved. Vote, please. We'll start with Ms., Mr. Nunez.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Next will be the Annual Consideration of Board Policies. Board Bylaws 9310 state, "The board shall review certain policies annually as required by Education Code 35160.5. If no revisions are deemed necessary, the board minutes shall nevertheless indicate that the review was conducted. Other policies shall be monitored and reviewed as specified in the policy itself or as needed to reflect changes in law and district circumstances. Be resolved if the Board of Education re-adopts all existing policies until revised or revoked by the Board of Education." I'd like to entertain a motion. And moving second, call for the question. Mr. Nunez.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado, that name has me stuck. I apologize. I'm killing your name.
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez. Motion carried. Takes us to four, item four, Annual Meeting of the San Bernardino School Finance Corporation and Board of Education. At this time, we will recess as the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education, and I will call to order the corpora- the Corporation of the San Bernardino Schools Financing Corporation meeting to order. And at this time, we're going to have to elect the same officers for this organization also. But all directors are present. And I will entertain public comments for this meeting, if there are any. I don't think there are. Let's go ahead.
There are none. You still need to do 4.4.
Designation of election of officers. The Corporation President will ask for nominations for the Corporation's President and Vice President. A vote will be taken on all appointments as one action, be resolved. So let's take a motion for Board President for the Corporation. I need a motion.
Move Danny Tillman.
Second.
Vote, please.
I think we do them all as one.
We'll do them all as one, you're right. Next will be nomination for Vice President.
Move Myra Sabios.
Second, and move in second it. And be resolved, Mauricio Ariano will be appointed as the Corporation's Secretary Treasurer. Be further resolved, the current Cunningham, be resolved, be appointed as the Corporation's Assistant Secretary. And it's been moved in second, so let's vote, please. Mr. Nunez?
He doesn't vote for these.
They don't vote for these?
No.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting of the San Bernardino School Finance Corporation. We will now convene the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board, District Board of Education meeting. Re-convene. That brings us to 5.5, special presentation, recognitions. San Bernardino County Fifth District Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. will present $2.6 million in funding for the development and enhancement of a student wellness center at Indian Springs High School and sports field lighting at Pacuma K8 School. We welcome Supervisor Baca Jr.
Yeah, thank you, Board President Tillman. I just want to congratulate you on being elected president. Madam Vice Chair, virus, congratulations on becoming Vice President. And Dr. Wyatt, just wanted to thank you for your service as president and cabinet and board members and community. It's really a pleasure and honor to be here. As President Tillman mentioned, we're going to do a presentation. But, you know, just before that, just want to congratulate, and it was mentioned with Jaden Daniels. It's very, very exciting for this community, and I know there's debate on whether he's the first from the inland empire. There was a guy named Glenn Davis from La Verne Bonita High School. They consider that inland empire, but he is the first from San Bernardino County. So something to be very, very proud of. But, no, we're very, very excited for Jaden. I had the opportunity to meet him five years ago at the Ken Hubbs Award at Grand Terrace High School, and got a chance to shake his hand and say hello. So I'm very happy for him and his family, but more importantly, I think, the excitement for this community and the hope that he gives many other students and future people that could come to this community realize, hey, you can have success too. So we're very, very proud of him. But today, we're here to present $2.6 million to the Board of Education for the community. And what we've done before is we presented a little over $2 million for the Muscoy Elementary about a year and a half ago, and I hear that's gone through the process and it's getting close. It's going out for bids, so we're excited for those improvements at Muscoy Elementary. But today, we're here to present $2.6 million. One of it is in regards to President Tillman's comments that he made earlier about expanding opportunities for our students and for our families. And that's $1.1 million that's being invested in the Pacuma K-8 school. And I just want to congratulate the board and the superintendent for their leadership on all the expansion that's going on at the school. We know that school's bursting at the seams, and this will also help alleviate some of the challenges they have. One of the challenges they have is they don't have any lights. So this will bring lighting to the community, which will help the soccer community. They have a very active soccer community, but also enhances the opportunity to allow students to use the ball fields. So it's going to light up two ball fields and the soccer complex, which is a great investment. And I just want to thank the staff for the San Bernardino City Unified School District. I did a walkthrough with your staff with Dr. Rodriguez, and this idea was actually presented to us by the Rosina Ranch HOA. And they're excited, they're ecstatic about it. So once you guys make the action, we're going to be sharing that news with them. It's a great investment, and will give more students and more families the opportunity to expand their play, especially in the evening and the summer moments. The next item is $1.5 million that we're investing in a wellness center at Indian Springs High School. I just want to kind of tell you how this opportunity came about. So I had an opportunity to meet with many of our local school districts and talk about homelessness. And in that conversation, Dr. Rodriguez suggested, hey, how about investing in a wellness center? So I just want to give hats off for Dr. Rodriguez and her leadership for bringing that to us and say, hey, why don't you help us with a wellness center? And we know how challenging it is for our students now. You know, post-COVID, things have changed. Our society has changed. You know, social media, phones, and everything has really changed. But we think this is a good investment from the county into the San Bernardino City Unified School District. It's a great partnership. It's my understanding that your district is going to not only take the 1.5, but look at it investing and matching the dollars so we can provide better services for our students. And that's an important element that we have to keep in mind. It's more than just curriculum and more than athletics. It's, you know, the all-around well-being of our children. So this is a great investment. We're very, very proud to do it. We're looking forward to more investments in the school district. And I want to thank Superintendent Ariano for his partnership and all your partnerships to really come together. And really, this is about making our community a better place to live, work, and play. And we're excited, we're excited. But also, two people that are here to help with a check presentation. I want to call, I'll be down here for a check presentation. I have two of our county Behavioral Health Commissioners. Beatrice Jues, who's here, she's a resident of Rialto. I was her granddaughter's teacher at Rialto High School. We're very, very proud of her. Yeah, we're very proud. Give it up for Beatrice Jues. Thank you for your service. Thank you, Beatrice. And also I have here is Gil Navarro, who's one of my commissioners with Behavioral Health, and really want to thank him for his advocacy. And one of the things that this commission has really, really advocated and pushed is behavioral health for our young kids. So on behalf of the County of San Bernardino, I want to say congratulations. We'd like to ask the Board President and the entire Board Superintendent to come down, invite my commissioners up. Congratulations, and God bless all of you. Thank you so much.
Oh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. That was just so wonderful. Thank you so much, Supervisor Baca. We appreciate your support and everything that you do for us here at San Bernardino City Unified School District. My name is Carla Cross, and I'm here tonight to emcee the Shining Star Awards. And I serve as the Internal Communications Officer within the Communications Department. So hello and happy holidays and welcome. We are just ready to begin, and before we do, I wanted to let you all know that the Shining Star Awards program, just in case some of you are wondering, what is the Shining Star Award? Well, it began in 2017 as the district's way of appreciating all of the substitute employees in the certificated and classified service here of the district. They serve as either guest teachers, student interns, coaches, and classified employees in a non-clerical capacity, or sometimes in a clerical capacity as well. This year, we received over 30 nominations of support from supervisors and colleagues across the district. Before we begin with our presentations, I would like to thank our union leader presidents for their support in serving as our screening committee. They reviewed every application through a, excuse me, a blind screening process to vet all of the nominations. And as a result, we will be presenting a combined total of 10 Shining Star Awards, five for the certificated class, and five for the classified. So thank you so very much for our union leaders. I appreciate your support. And want you to know, we would love to honor all of the classified and certificated substitutes across the district, but we just simply do not have time. So we're going to graciously appreciate the 10 that will be here before you tonight. These honorees will receive a certificate from the district. They will also receive a certificate from the Office of Supervisor Baca, and they will receive the prestigious trophy Shining Star Award this evening. So honorees, when your name is called, I invite you and your families to come forward to accept your reward, your award, excuse me, and have a photo taken with the members of our Board of Education and Superintendent Mauricio Ariano. Please walk down the ramp, the ramp where you see the balloons placed there. You'll come down, you're going to shake hands with the members of our executive cabinet. You'll then be greeted by our superintendent and Board of Education, and then you'll take your place center stage here at the gold plated cover here in the center of the floor. After you take your picture, you will exit, as these individuals are here now, along this side of the room. And I will ask, as a courtesy to all of our honorees tonight, please, after you receive your award, please return to your seats so that every honoree has the benefit of applause from a full audience tonight. So if we could get your cooperation, I would really appreciate that. So now, it gives me great pleasure to invite Principal Dory Stratton to come forward, as we recognize a deserving substitute of San Andreas High. Dory Stratton, please come forward. Our first honoree is non-classified substitute employee, Ms. Pauline Botello. Pauline is a student at Cal State San Bernardino, and she aspires to become a high school teacher for SBCUSD. She says working here at San Andreas High School is the most rewarding job she has ever had. Congratulations, Pauline, on your recognition. Audience, please give her one more round of applause. Thank you, Pauline. Thank you, Principal Stratton. At this time, I'd like to invite Director of Communications and Community Relations, Mary Rhone Goodwin, to the front of the dais to congratulate our next honoree, Ms. Karina Chavez. Audience, please give her a warm round of applause. Karina began her service with SBCUSD in 2013 as a student intern at Holcomb Elementary, where she worked until 2020, in a kindergarten-through TK class. Karina currently serves as a clerical substitute in the Communications Department, and in her spare time, she enjoys bullet journaling, collecting stationery, and listening to music. Congratulations, Karina. Thank you, Karina, Mary Rhone. Next, I'd like to invite Director of Elementary Instruction, Amy Coker, and Program Specialist Danielle Coberton to come forward, as we recognize two student interns in the Elementary Instruction Department. As they make their way forward, I will now call Ms. Kimberly Funchess, who has served as a student intern with the Gate Department for nearly one year while attending Riverside Community College full-time, with plans to transfer to Cal State to pursue a bachelor's degree and a teaching credential. Kimberly loves to attend concerts, read fiction, and help others. Congratulations, Kimberly. Hey, please help us welcome our next honoree, Ms. Emily Merritt. Emily, come on down. After graduating from San Gregorio High, Emily began serving SBCUSD in 2019 as a student intern in the Elementary Instruction Department. She continued her studies at Crafton Hills College and San Bernardino Valley College, where she graduated with five associate's degrees. She currently attends Cal State San Bernardino, majoring in criminal justice. Congratulations on your recognition, Emily. Honorees? Honorees who've already received their awards, thank you so very much for your cooperation. There will be a group photo with all honorees at the conclusion of tonight's program. So as a reminder, please return to your seats immediately following your recognition. Thank you. Thank you, Danielle. Congratulations, Emily. Now I invite Principal Maria Martinez to come forward, as we recognize a deserving Gomez Elementary resident guest teacher, none other than Mr. Alejandro Foz, who started in the district in 2017 as a recreational aide at Gomez Elementary. Alejandro returned after graduating from UCLA and serves Gomez Scholars as an early numeracy specialist. specialist. He enjoys spending time with his family and serving as a chairperson on San Bernardino's Animal Control Commission. Thank you, Alejandro. Thank you, Maria. Next, we have Principal Raoul Pedraza Jr. Would you please come forward as we invite your deserving member from the Inland Career Education Center, who is our very own Stephanie Rodriguez. Stephanie, congratulations, please come down. Stephanie is a native of San Bernardino who graduated from Royal Valley High School and earned her bachelor's degree from Cal State San Bernardino in 2015. Stephanie began her career here in the district as a bilingual instructional aide and decided to pursue a teaching credential. She began subbing in the evenings as an English as a Second Language teacher in 2022 and she continues to do that even now as she's recently become a full-time GED teacher at ICEC. Principal Creisha Sims, please come forward as we recognize your two deserving substitute First, let's welcome Ms. Jessica Palacios, who joined SBCUSD in January of this year as a day-to-day guest teacher. And she found her place as a resident guest teacher at Jones Elementary School. She loves to create meaningful relationships and makes connections with students through math. When she's not teaching, she loves spending time with her family, drawing, or reading books with her children. Audience, please help me recognize or welcome our next honoree, Ms. Vanessa Santos, who serves as a non-clerical classified substitute at Jones Elementary. Vanessa is a mother of three and a wife to her supportive husband. In addition to her role at Jones Campus, she also works in the Expanded Learning Program, helping scholars explore their creative and imaginative sides. Next, we have Principal Harold Olivo. Please come forward. Thank you, sir. The next recipient of this evening's Shining Star Award is Estefani Flores Gutierrez. Before joining SBCUSD in September 2019, she was a graduate student at Cal State San Bernardino, teaching math courses. Since that time, she has served at both Rio Vista and North Verdymont Elementary Schools. Estefani shares that the staff at both of these campuses have been wonderful and helpful. Congratulations. Thank you, members of the board and cabinet. Would you please take your seats at this time? And rounding out tonight's program as they take their seat, we have one final recipient of tonight's award who was unable to be with us this evening. Her name is Andrea Cachua De La Torre. Andrea wanted me to share that she is affectionately known as Mrs. T. and her journey with SBCUSD began in 2021. Her primary assignment was at Pacific High School, where the exceptional students have made her role as a guest teacher exceptionally rewarding. Congratulations, Andrea. We'll be sure to get your award to you soon. Thank you all for attending tonight's program, for sitting so patiently. I appreciate your cooperation. I wish you all a good rest of your evening and a happy holiday season. Honorees, as a reminder, would you please follow Karina Borza, district photographer, to the lobby for your group photo? Thank you.
Item number six, resolution and recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born January fifteenth, nineteen twenty-nine and changed our nation forever through his leadership, service, and clarity of vision. And whereas Dr. King was a leading civil rights advocate of his time, spearheading the civil rights movement in the United States during the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties, earning worldwide recognition as an eloquent spokesperson for equality and nonviolence. And whereas Dr. King helped organize the March of Washington during which he delivered his moving "I Have a Dream" speech on August twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-three. And whereas Dr. King received a Nobel Peace Prize in nineteen sixty-four for his work towards passage of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and for combating racial inequality through insistent use of civil disobedience and nonviolent resistance. And whereas Dr. King also helped organize the Selma to Montgomery marches in nineteen sixty-five, which brought attention to advocacy for passes of the Voting Rights Act to guarantee all African-American citizens the right to vote. And whereas Dr. King paid the ultimate price when he was assassinated on April fourth, nineteen sixty-eight and was posthumously awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom and the Congressional Gold Medal. And whereas to remember Dr. King's life, work, and dream, a national holiday was first observed on January twentieth, nineteen eighty-six and was later declared to be officially observed annually on the third Monday in January. And whereas on this national holiday honoring Dr. King and throughout the year, we celebrate his memory by performing acts of kindness through service to others. Therefore, be resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does hereby recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three and encourages students, staff, community members, and all Americans to live out his teachings as we continue to work for the day when the dignity and humanity of every person is respected.
It's been moved.
It's been moved in a second. Mr. Vaz, Mr. Núñez? Ms. Vázquez? And Ms. Presiado?
Aye.
Presiado. That brings us to item number six, public comments, six point one. Receive public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, and fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than thirty minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. Our first person presenting public comments is Ms. LaCrecia Dowdy. Welcome and good to see you again.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. Congratulations to all those who were elected into their positions. I just want to thank you guys so much for all that you guys do for our community and for our youth because they are our future. Again, my name is LaCrecia Dowdy. I am the president for the Southern California Black Chamber of Commerce, the Inland Cities East Chapter, which covers the San Bernardino area and also other surrounding cities. Our main president is Rich Wallace. We have fourteen chapters from the Desert to the Sea. It's kind of funny how you guys did the resolution for the MLK Day because that's what I'm here for, folks. I'm here to just bring information about us putting on the fourth annual MLK Day Parade, which is going to take place in the city of San Bernardino. In the previous years, we had it on the west side of San Bernardino, but we are moving it to downtown San Bernardino where it'd be coming off of Fourth Street and then also where we can circle the MLK statue and just want to get the schools involved, get the youth involved. You know, we want bands out there, we want drill teams out there, just a great day of just festivities and just celebration. Our theme is making a difference in the lives of all, justice, unity, inclusiveness for a better today. I heard you guys actually mentioning the parade and then our young Heisman. We actually contacted them ourselves to be our grand marshal for the MLK Parade. So I'm asking, like, if it's possible, we can work together and put it together. It was all about collaboration and unity and coming together bigger and better. So I just wanted to put it out there in the atmosphere. But I do have flyers. Are we allowed to give you guys flyers? Who do I give that to? Okay. So thank you guys so much. Please check us out on our website. Again, LaCrecia Dowdy with the Southern California Black Chamber of Commerce, here to pump up the MLK Day Parade. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The date of the parade again?
It's that Monday, which is January the fifteenth. And we also have an MLK Gala that's going to happen that Saturday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Board President. I think that item I put in was on the presentation of the check. So...
I had you down for two items. One was for a public comment and the other one's for...
No, the...
Point two.
It wasn't public comment, it was for the check.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and present that. But I just want to say that we're real fortunate to have Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. representing the fifth district. His background as a schoolteacher in Rialto Unified School District, he has kept his momentum and commitment to the youth and giving a check to the San Bernardino City Unified School District where the Student Wellness Center is fantastic. As a commissioner, that's been one of my priorities. I've worked with Dr. Hagen, our deputy director. We've made a presentation to Dr. Rodriguez's staff and we've also did a presentation in the Rialto Unified School District promoting student wellness centers, of course, the mental health component. It's very much needed with our young people. A lot of our young people have issues that emanate from home, that they bring to school, and they need that support. So I really commend your district to be a role model for the rest of the districts and the county to also continue to implement student wellness centers in their secondary schools. So congratulations to San Bernardino City Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Ms. Samantha Stacklehouse?
Good evening, President Tillman, Superintendent Ariano, members of the board. I feel like it's been months since I've made a public comment, even though we were on a short break and I'm sure that everyone's really looking forward to the holiday season. Really briefly, I just wanted to mention that you received an email from our Vice President Fatima earlier today about discussion item eleven point two. Again, just wanted to let you know that we're always open to questions or if you have comments or concerns, please feel free to reach out to us at any time. But the main reason that I'm here today, I'm sure you've noticed it over the last few board meetings we've had, some of our charter schools come to the board to make public comment, to talk about something that's going on at their school, introduce a program, introduce themselves as administrators, and that's intentional. Our San Bernardino City Charter leaders meet every month together and they've decided that the best course of action to involve this board and our district and to some of our daily activities is to then bring those presentations to you. We know that all of you lead very busy lives and sometimes it's difficult for you to come out and visit schools or come to events and things like that. So over the next year, you're going to see almost at every single board meeting, a charter school that has signed up will come and give a public comment to you just to keep you updated about what's going on at the school or if there's things that they may need help with or just want to show off, just so that you get a little glimpse into what we're doing in our day-to-day activities. So you're going to hear later on from our Woodward folks or here in the audience today. It's their turn during December. But I'm really looking forward to this opportunity for you to engage with our schools and our leaders and more importantly, our kiddos. I loved the fact that when public safety came, they gave a little demonstration with all their cadets. These are some of the things that we are super proud of in our charter schools. So again, this is a great glimpse into our day-to-day work, but if you're ever curious about coming to the school and visiting, please reach out to myself or the school leaders so that we could set it up. We welcome every single one of you to please come and check out our campuses and our schools and the great things that we have going on. And then on a personal note, we just wanted to extend our thank you to Dr. Wyatt for being board president over the last year. We appreciate all your time and effort and thank you to this board for a wonderful year. Hopefully you all have a happy holidays and a great new year. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacklehouse.
Good evening, newly-elected President Tillman, Mr. Ariano, esteemed members of the board and cabinet. I'm Barbara Pastchek-Cox and I am the Vice President for the San Bernardino Teachers Association. Tonight, I stand before you representing not only our president, but also the three thousand dedicated members of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. As the holiday season approaches, I'd like to extend heartfelt greetings on behalf of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. the San Bernardino Teachers Association. To each one of you, our valued community members, fellow SBTA colleagues, students, and the staff of the San Bernardino, San Bernardino City Unified School District, we wish you a happy holiday. This festive season is a time for reflection, gratitude, and joy. It's a period where we celebrate our shared experiences, the challenges we've overcome, and the successes we've achieved together. The holiday season is also a reminder of the community spirit that binds us. It is a testament to the resilience and dedication of our educators, the enthusiasm and curiosity of our students, and the unwavering support of our administrative staff and community partners. We recognize the collective effort that has contributed to the growth and the success of our educational environment. In the spirit of this season, let us also acknowledge the challenges that lie ahead. The new year brings new opportunities for growth, learning, and improvement. As we move forward, the San Bernardino Teachers Association remains committed to working collaboratively with the board and the cabinet. Our focus remains on providing the best educational experience for our students and supporting our educators in their noble profession. As we celebrate this holiday season, let's remember to cherish and nourish the bonds we formed. Let's carry forward the spirit of unity, collaboration that defines us. Here's to a season filled with warmth, joy, and the promise of a brighter, more prosperous year ahead. Thank you for your continued partnership and support. Happy holidays to you all and have a wonderful new year.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco Ramirez.
Good evening, Board members, Cabinet, Chief. Today I want to talk about some issues I've been having. I'm always transparent, and I think that's one of the things that drives me all the time. One of the things is I currently have two kids. I will start with, I have three kids in our school district. They're at Tenero Vista. It's in the west side of San Bernardino, if you know. Two of my oldest have an IEP. The oldest has not shown no growth within the year. So for the first time, I reached out to someone I know who is passionate. His name is Gil Navarro. He's actually sitting behind me. And I asked Gil, you know, Gil, I think I need your help now. I think my son is not performing. I've done everything I could possibly do. I want to do it on my own, but I might need your help. I had a scheduled IEP meeting on Friday, December 18. On Tuesday, I went to our school principal and let her know that I needed to reschedule that meeting because I had an education advocate to come to the meeting. The principal at school shared that she could not reschedule because mom had already confirmed for the day, and she only needed one parent to be present. Well, I'm dad, and dad shows up to meetings. And I told principal, I will not be in that meeting because I need my education advocate to be present. I also shared with her that anything that needed to be done with IEP needed to be run through my education advocate because he had my permission to do so. The meeting is very scheduled. No big deal, right? It is a big deal because she made it feel that wasn't important. And if she's doing that to me, she's probably, probably doing it to other teachers or parents or other grandparents in the community. That's not acceptable. Yeah, the meeting's been rescheduled. I invite you, Dr. Funches, to join us because I know you heard lead. But, um, you know, my teachers, my, my child's teacher, kid, uh, first grade decided to transfer over to a different school. Usually people, when they move from a workplace, it's not because the work is hard. It usually moves because there's a toxic management in the system. We have a new teacher, also another teacher that I heard that is moving. Ah, there must be a reason. So I came today and just share that with you, Dr. Funches. Okay. Second thing I want to share with you guys, how much minutes I have? Where's my timer? 22, 90 seconds? Is that it? Oh. Rapidly, we have someone that has been hired by the police, the security guard. He is halfway through that academy, San Bernardino Extended Academy. Chief, patch that kid, chief. He deserves it. He's humble. He's a hard worker, and I would love to see him when he steps out of that stage be badged because you know how to do it. And met and sign him, a police officer, Chiveria, because he relates to him. He went to the same school. He's youngest at Chiveria. He passed your background. There's no excuse for him to not be badged.
Thank you. Woodward Leadership Academy?
Good evening, Board, and President Tillman. I am Ms. Johnson, the Operations Administrator at Woodward Leadership Academy. Thank you for allowing us a few minutes to share with you this evening. Woodward Leadership Academy opened its doors in September of 2012. Our school is named after the late Captain Edward W. Woodward Sr., an original Tuskegee Airman. At Woodward, we are dedicated to offering an educational opportunity, which includes an emphasis in leadership to all students in grades TK through 6. We currently have 86 students enrolled. Our mission is to provide an excellent education, equip students to have strong morals, and be responsible community members, create a foundation for lifelong learning, and to develop students' capacity to reach their highest potential in every aspect of life. Through community-wide collaborative efforts, we proudly serve our students and family. We currently offer Spanish classes to all of our students, a full TK program, a full-day TK program, as well as a full-time site-based counseling program. Our after-school program, the SOAR Club, is open Monday through Friday and provides homework assistance and a variety of preferred activity classes, which have included music, cooking, personal care, to name a few. Over the years, we have also sponsored various clubs such as Cross Country, Cheer Team, Boys to Men, and Crowns and Curls for our girls. At this time, I would like to present to you a few members of the Associated Student Body of Woodward Leadership Academy. The ASB is comprised of students in grades TK through 6.
Hi, my name is Asena Nali, and I'm Vice President for ASB.
Hi, my name is Leah Holland, and I'm student advocate for ASB.
Hi, my name is Drew Holland, and I am treasurer of ASB.
Hi, my name is Alex. I'm in first grade. I'm a secretary.
Hi, my name is Katie Walker, and I am in the sixth grade.
Hi, my name is Asana Nali, and I'm in the sixth grade.
Hi, my name is Doron Williamson, and I'm in the fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Royal Robinson, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Taylan Ford. I'm in sixth grade, and please stand and repeat after us.
We are somebody. We are somebody. We are kind. We respect ourselves. We respect others. We can do whatever we put our minds to do. There's greatness in us. We are intelligent. We are talented. We are great readers. We are great writers. We are great at doing math. For us to fail? Impossible. Because failure is not an option. We are somebody. We are somebody. We are the voices of WLA.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Antonio Lopez. I'm an ASB member here at Woodward Leadership Academy. I am a fifth-grade student representative. I take pride in my school and showing through using these fundamentals of our affir-, as our affirmation. We recite this every morning before we start our day as scholars. It remains to me, it reminds me to stay kind, respectful, and take accountability for our actions for they determine what our future holds. The affirmation holds us as a standard of unity and gives us, and gives us a prepare for the lessons of the day. We recite the words, "I am somebody." We believe that we are somebody through our actions. We say failure is not an option. I am up here today to demonstrate that it is not. I know next time, this time this, next year, I will be ASB president because I am somebody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job, students. That is all of our public comments. That brings us to section seven, 7.1, tentative agreement, 2023-2024, reopener, Article 6, wages, and Article, what's that, 14, leaves between California School Employees Association and San Bernardino Chapter Number 183 and San Bernardino Signified School District. Is, is appropriate this time to conduct a public hearing? Open the public hearing. Any public comments for the hearing?
There are no comments.
Be resolved, the Board Education adopts a tentative agreement, reopener, Article 6, wages, and Article 14 between the California School Employees Association and its San Bernardino Chapter Number 183 and the San Bernardino Signified School District. So move.
Second.
It's been moved in a second. Call for the vote. Mr. Nunez?
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Ms. Presiado?
Aye.
I do want to say, I know we took extra action to ensure that the employees got the increase in pay expedited. So they should get it this, hopefully this month before, did they get it this month before? Did they get it early? So they get on the 15th. Just want to give some credit for that. We love y'all. Motion carries. Motion carries. That takes us to 7.2, tentative agreement, Article 7, wages, Article 7 benefits, Article 10, hours, and Article 14 leaves between the San Bernardino School Police Association and San Bernardino Signified School District. I will open a public meeting for item number 7.2. Are there any public comments?
Hearing none.
Hearing none. This hearing is now closed. Be resolved, the Board Education adopts a tentative agreement, Article 6, wages, Article 7, benefits, Article 10, hours, and Article 14, leaves between San Bernardino Schools Police Office Association and San Bernardino Signified School District. Is there a motion?
I'll move. Second.
It's been moved in a second. Any comments? Call for the question. Ms. Presiado?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Nunez?
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
That brings us to 7.0, closed session. Are there any closed session public comments?
One second, please. Ms. Rosales Medina, and that's it.
Mr. Timothy Prince?
Thank you, President Tillman, members of the board. I'm here as a 30-year attorney, and your, your employee is on the agenda of closed session for a potential, we would request the opportunity to address the board in closed session.
Now, we don't normally have comments in closed session? We don't normally do that, Mr. Prince?
Okay. I think, I know everybody on the board, the exception of Dr. Funches. I have been practicing law for 30 years in downtown San Bernardino. I represent your 21-year employee, who is a budget officer. He expended his whole professional life at this school district, serving its administrators, staff, charter schools, and students. His significant contributions to the district during his tenure, particularly in his role ensuring financial oversight of charter schools. He started overseeing three charter schools and currently oversees 12 charter schools. He has endured, endured personnel cuts and changes without compromising his work product. His dedication and comprehensive work saved the district from potential litigation, financial liability, and potential challenges by charter schools. His record involves saving this district from potential litigation with charter schools, which, as you know, has been an issue in other neighboring districts. Attorney Paul McLaughlin made an effort to forestall action on staff's previous request to the board regarding the employment of your budget officer and the resulting opportunity to put in place a mutual, mutually beneficial severance agreement. We wrote a demand letter outlining facts and waited, as has been our practice in this matter, for weeks. We got no substantive response whatsoever. Staff never responded with a counteroffer. It just used old, outdated letterhead listing the previous superintendent, Dr. Irvin. That's a professional organization. The letter went on to say, if you would like to have this matter addressed in open session, the deadline was yesterday. I mentioned this not only because it's unbelievable, but because it's emblematic of the record in this matter. He is currently suffering from intentionally inflicted severe emotional distress with physical symptoms being treated medically, which are a threat to his life and health. It is with great regret that he finds himself compelled to consider early retirement due to the pattern of unfair treatment. The, as you well know, the Personnel Commission rules govern the employment relationship. Only terminations that comply with the rules, especially due process, can be sustained. An invalid termination will be overturned by the Personnel Commission, and if it's not, it will result in liability to this district of a serious magnitude. My largest jury verdict in my practice was a man of similar age that's reached the pinnacle of his career, where he should be considering the highest salary and opportunities of his career. If that's taken away from him, the liability is overwhelming. It will be into the millions. The Personnel Commission rules were not followed. Can you imagine working at a job and not having an evaluation for two years? Two years! He's entitled to a performance. He's entitled to a performance improvement plan, P I P, Rule nine point one, nineteen point one point seven. Nothing current. The statement of charges against him contains allegations of actions well over a year ago in violation of the rules. The skele hearing officer was supposed to be a man of great integrity, who I know. It was changed at the last minute without notice to anybody. If I may have, thank you. Instead, the same hearing officer as before, Ms. Jenks shows up. When we're done with the presentation, having no substantive interaction, the doors closed, and the participants, including his supervisor, speak with the hearing officer. A decision was due within five days. Two months later, no decision. Violation of rules. Should the violation of Mr. Ru- of his rights somehow be compounded by adverse decisions of the board and Personnel Commission, we will be pursuing a lawsuit against the district.
Thank you, Mr. Prince.
I would implore you, do not take action against this employee tonight. He does not deserve that. That's not legally justified. Direct your legal team to be in touch and give us a substantive response. We will work this out in a way that benefits the district and the students.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Brings us to eight point two, closed session agenda. As provided by law, the board will meet in closed session for consideration of the following: public employee appointment, coordinator, college career, conference with local, conference with labor negotiator, public employee discipline, and student matters. At this time, we'll go into closed session. All right, let's call the meeting back to order. Item nine, action reported from closed session, nine point one, approval of coordinator, college and career workforce development. So move. Be resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employees: Chelsea Brammer Ramirez, coordinator, college and career workforce development effective date, work year, and salary to be determined. Fundly five five, well, they moved to the second. Dr. Funchess?
Thank you, uh, Board President Tillman and board. I do have the excellent opportunity to introduce to you a returning, uh, employee to our district, uh, Mrs. Chelsea Brammer Ramirez, coming on board as the coordinator of college and career and workforce development. Just a few things, all things work-based opportunities for our young people, creating a pipeline from our scholar-student body to our local businesses, creating internships. That's her passion. She served previously at Indian Springs High School back in, from two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen, as a program facilitator, is in love with San Bernardino City Unified and our surrounding community board. I introduce to you, Mrs. Chelsea Brammer Ramirez.
Thank you so much. What an amazing introduction. I had to write this down because when I get nervous, I laugh or cry, so I'm going to read this directly. Uh, good evening, A S B members of the San Bernardino City Unified School Board, Superintendent Ariano and Cabinet. I wanted to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude for the incredible opportunity to serve the students and families of San Bernardino as the college and career coordinator. It is an honor to help support our students' academic journey in this capacity, as well as to help create systems of support during their K twelve years to set them up for all of life's adventures that always start during and then the day after high school. I'm excited to collaborate with the San Bernardino school community to deepen the linked learning opportunities and partnerships with the college and career team. I am looking forward to returning to the district after starting my teaching career here, um, well over twenty years ago. Um, I wanted to thank you all for your time tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to service San Bernardino. I'm very excited to be back in the Dino. Um, I love this community and I'm very excited to be here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome back. Board Education exception adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings, of facts, and recommendations, and orders expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code, section forty-eight, nine hundred. So move.
Second.
Move to the second. Nine point three, recommendation for suspension or expulsion excluding mandatory offenses, but remanded to youth court for other means of correction. The Board of Education exception adopts the recommendation.
So moved. Second.
They moved to the second. Pass nine point four, petition to expel, rescind, seal, or modify youth court or expulsion. The Board of Education authorized expulsion and/or youth court modification, expulsion, rescinding, or sealing of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino Signified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code forty-eight, nine hundred. Is there one to pull here? What is the one you want to pull?
Well, four, three, eight, seven, oh, nine, please.
Had a, uh, item pull, other than that item, can I get a motion to approve the others?
Motion to move.
Second.
Item passed. Mr. Husky, would you like to entertain, um, a motion on the item you pulled?
Yes, I move that we not approve four, three, eight, seven, oh, nine at this time. Second.
They moved to the second. Brings us to item ten, administrative reports, ten point one, first interim financial report.
Good evening, President Tillman, Vice President Savios, uh, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Ariano, and Executive Cabinet. Tonight, I will, uh, share with the board our first interim report. Uh, before, uh, jumping into the report, I just want to acknowledge, uh, the work, uh, that was, uh, put into create this report, uh, under the leadership of, uh, Trias Huey, our Director of Fiscal Services, and the Fiscal Services team, um, worked tirelessly, uh, putting this together, pulling all the information, um, in the process of, of assembling this very complicated and, and, uh, informative document. And I am very much, uh, appreciative of, of the efforts. Um, and also, the, uh, Mr. Ariano has, has said, when we, when we do actions and services, uh, in a formula, uh, just on the other side of the equal sign is student achievement. And the work done to put this together is truly reflective of that, and the focus on realigning resources and maximizing, uh, the support for our sites and our departments with, uh, resource alignment is very critical to student achievement. Thank you. Okay, so tonight's objectives, uh, we're going to discuss the state budget and fiscal outlook, uh, provide updated, uh, budget, uh, current and multi-year projections, uh, with reserves. I also want to share with the board an S R three update, as well as considerations, uh, and next steps. Uh, budget certification. So, uh, the first interim is actually the, the first time the district, uh, has its official official, uh, revision of the adopted budget. It includes all activities, both revenues and expenditures, uh, from July first through October thirty-first, and the district must certify its financial condition in each of these interims. There will be another interim, second interim in March. Um, positive is what we're putting forth, where we show our obligations to the current year and two out-years are met. The, uh, state fiscal outlook. Uh, last week, the Legislative, uh, Analyst Office released, uh, their report, uh, and this is the early stages for, uh, the governor to utilize the report, uh, in the shaping of his, um, twenty-four, twenty-five budget proposal that will be released, uh, January tenth. The report, uh, showed a very, uh, concerning, uh, economic situation, uh, where we are about fifty-eight billion dollars short in revenue and twenty-six billion, uh, of that fifty-eight, uh, for twenty-two, twenty-three. The impact to Prop ninety-eight, which is the main funding source for education, is down between eighteen to twenty-one billion dollars over that same three-year period. Uh, there is a, uh, a statutory cost of living adjustment of one point two seven percent that was included in a report for twenty-four, twenty-five. That would cost the state about one point three, one point two billion. Uh, the key concerns noted in the report as to this, uh, current state of our, our economy: weak job growth, uh, reduced investment in business and expansions, uh, flat consumer spending, uh, increased prices, as well as decline in home sales. Uh, so as the governor starts to prepare for his budget, uh, proposal, uh, he'll work with the Department of Finance, and as we await the, uh, school services presentation, um, you know, at the end of the day, it'll be about, "Show me the money." So we'll look forward to that in January. I wanted to share and remind the board of our first interim budget assumptions and actions. Our enrollment, uh, our adopted, uh, adopted budget was forty-five, five oh four. Uh, at first interim, it's forty-four, seven forty-one, about seven hundred and sixty-three off. Our ADA is up about a percent, um, just, just a little over a percent. Our funded ADA is plus one hundred and twenty-seven, and remember, that's over, uh, the flexibilities of a three-year average. And then our unduplicated pupil percentage is also up, uh, about a half a percent, a little more than that. That's for, um, twenty-three, twenty-four. When we look at our major assumptions for, uh, the next two years, uh, we see that we have, uh, our cost of living rate is right there at three point nine four for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six, we have three point two nine. Uh, this is consistent with what was shared with us by our common message from the county as well as school services, um, knowing that what we have heard from the L A O, um, one point two seven percent is much less than what's reflected in our assumptions. Based on what is presented in January by the governor, we will then, uh, use that information as we build our second interim. Our second interim, uh, in March will give us a much clearer picture of where our budget, uh, impacts are, and especially in our two out-years. As we look into the spring, we'll be looking at, uh, an additional year out, uh, so that will have to be taken into consideration. Our enrollment, uh, is declining, uh, based on our assumptions, at, at about one percent. Our, uh, actual ADA will go up a percent, we're projecting. Our funded ADA will dip a little bit, and our unduplicated pupil percentage will continue to tick up another half percent. Sorry about that, I didn't slide that over. I apologize. Those are the key elements that I had addressed. The, uh, top line increase, so this is looking, excuse me, this is looking at the adopted budget, uh, for combined general fund. So this is both restricted and unrestricted dollars. The increase, uh, that you notice from first interim to adopted budget is, um, four point four million primarily due to adjustments to our L C F F. Uh, we had a little slight increase in our ADA, um, as well as our supplemental concentration dollars, so that caused a little tick up there. The bracketed, uh, expenditures that you see on the side are increased, uh, expenditure costs from adopted budget to first interim. This is an, an artifact of realigning and, um, uh, reassigning, um, funding or our budget line items to align with, uh, actual expenditures. So there's some fluctuation between the, the, the major object codes so that we can affect the transactions, uh, by our schools and our departments. Uh, you'll notice that, that circle there of eighty-nine point six in line seven is a transfer out. That is consistent of the, uh, athletic strategic plan, about twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three million is part of that eighty-nine, and the other part of that is about sixty-five million, which are obligations for our, uh, committed facilities projects. And this is, uh, using our S R three funds to, uh, augment our general unrestricted funds by freeing them up and charging against, uh, expenditures against our S R threes, and those, uh, that eighty-nine point six million is being moved, uh, transferred out to our Fund Forty to meet our obligations for facilities.
Mr. Comney?
Sir.
Just, um, so that the numbers match, uh, you have here increase in, uh, local control funding formula revenue, but I'm assuming that there's other revenue, because if you look at the expenditures, they're a lot higher than that revenue number.
Yes, sir, and I'll, I'll, I'll point that, thank you. Uh, what that is reflecting is, is, uh, an increase in restricted. Now, the restricted, uh, programs didn't necessarily increase in revenue. What they increased i- it was from carryover, about forty-seven million dollars in restricted carryover that augmented that, and, uh, that's why, as Mr. Tillman just said, the, uh, first interim, uh, expenditure, uh, just about doubled. And that is, uh, consistent with our, uh, S R three, uh, sunsetting. And that is consistent with our SRR three sunsetting in September of 2024. So we can expect a higher expenditure rate to ensure that those dollars are spent. This multi-year projection on the next page is over this year and the next two years. And you'll see that at the very top there, we began the year at $304 million. We had that transfer out that I mentioned to Fund 40. We had a deficit expenditure of 113.2 million, which leads us with an ending fund or a projected ending fund balance for this year at 191 million. That'll carry over as a beginning fund balance for 2425, based on our assumptions that will, again, be reexamined and updated in our second interim. Well, shows a $67.6 million deficit expenditure and reducing our ending fund balance to 123.4 million. And then looking out in 2526, we start at 123. We have a $47.1 million deficit expenditure, and that leaves us with an ending fund balance in 2526, projected to be 76.3 million.
And on that item, I'm assuming that all this deficit spending is planned?
Yes, sir.
And where we feel confident that we know where we're at, we're going to be able to balance the spending based on the amount of revenues coming in, right?
Yeah, we're looking at also our current expenditures. And on the next slide, it'll hit on that. But we are examining our, looking at our contracts, looking at our staffing, our position control, to make sure that we're utilizing all of our resources in the most efficient and effective manner to maximize our revenue. I wanted to share with the Board the SRR three update and just highlight a few items that are planned to expend this year. Just pulled some higher dollar values. Summer of 2024 at about eight and a half million is planned to occur. We also have increased transportation costs at 17 million. We have classroom furniture that we're working with identified sites to refresh their instructional classrooms. We're also looking at device refresh. We've already completed Phase One of that. Phase Two will begin in January. We're looking forward to getting those out to the sites. We had some 2223 invoices that included some HVAC replacements, some furniture costs, and mechanical upgrades at Bonneville and at Emerton that carried into this year, so that 15 million is addressing those invoices. And then that continuity of service that I mentioned at 85 million, that includes our athletic strategic plan costs, as well as our committed facilities costs. Those are planned to expend by September 30 of 2024. Considerations and next steps, just our challenges. Current California economy, our enrollment, we are monitoring very closely. Calpers increases, I wanted to, we're at 26.6 right now. It's expected to go to 30.10 by 2829. So a fair increase with our calpers costs. Calsters will remain constant at around 19.1%. We're also focused on the Board's priority to fund elementary transportation that aligns with our early start requirements. So that was a Board priority that we're trying to maintain. Increased costs of goods and services, as well as I mentioned just a little bit ago about staffing costs or our position control. Our next steps, as I mentioned earlier, the governor's budget proposal will be released on January 10th. And looking forward with great anticipation to see how he will address the 58 billion in revenue loss. There's tools in the tool chest, as they say, that he can utilize that we did not have in 2008, '09 recession. So that is something that we have to look forward to. And then, of course, in January, we'll have our 2324 LCAP update that will be presented to the Board. With that, I can take any questions that any of the Board members might have.
I would just like to say, just in general, at a high level, it's almost like financial whiplash. You had all this money come in for SRR one, two, and three, and we had to spend all these hundreds of millions of dollars extra. And now we're on the cusp of a $58 billion deficit, and it may get worse. So the news that's going to come in January, I'm sure is not going to be good news. And they're only projecting like a 1-point-something billion, I mean, 1-point-something percent COLA, which means that's barely enough to cover step and column. So things are going to tighten up. So we've got to make sure that we're looking at our expenditures. And the key is, as they cut, we've got to make sure we freeze positions in terms of the number of students that we're supporting. In saying that, we're still a lot better off than a lot of districts throughout the state. We just got back from the conference in San Francisco, and there were a lot of districts that I talked to where they're shutting down schools. They have declining enrollment that is, you know, 5% and 10% every year. So they're in much worse shape than we are financially, and will be in the coming years. So it's going to get tougher, but that's the time we plan now. Ms. Ariano, make sure we spend our money the right way. We don't have any debt. So although I'm saying this, we still can meet all of our needs. And I've heard from some folks that say we need some things, that classrooms are different sites. I think we have the money to do it. And if those needs are out there, then we should bring them to the Board and make sure we are able to address them. No other lights on, so we'll go on. Okay, who is it?
Good evening.
Is that Ms. Preciado?
Yeah. So my question was, why is there a decline in enrollment? And how can we increase enrollment?
That's an excellent question, Ms. Preciado. What we have is, it's not a district phenomena, it's actually a statewide phenomena. And as Mr. Tillman stated, there are cement districts that are far worse off than we are. We are kind of in, I would say, in a tempered decline. We are still declining, but it doesn't seem to be cliff-like. It seems to be more kind of a tapered. I think the Board's and Mr. Ariano's focus to make these schools in our district the premier of the area so that students from surrounding areas want to come here. This is where an A-class not only education can be found, but A-class athletics can be found, after-school programming can be found. We've got a very supportive community. We've got staff, both teachers and classified, that work very hard every day, even on weekends, and make a difference. So it's a matter, I think, of us of just having our schools start to shine more than they are.
And let me say, you know, I've been on the Board a long time. So there was a time when you had less housing, but you had more students, because you had more students per residence. It's just, at this time, there are fewer students per residence. And the numbers go up and down. I'm sure there'll be a time when the enrollment will increase again, as you have more students in those same residents, maybe it's bigger families. But the way it is right now, there are fewer people in those residents than there used to be. We actually built enough schools to have capacity for 60,000 students. Years ago, probably before you were born, we actually used to have year-round schools, because we had so many students that we didn't have enough facilities to put the students in in a regular nine-month school cycle. So we actually had students going to school year-round. We knew it wasn't conducive to learning, the statistics showed it. That's why we built the extra school sites. But then all of a sudden, it switched, and you got a downturn in populations. But I don't know, there's no exact, I think no one knows exactly why there are fewer students, but there are. Thank you. Great question. One more. Who is it? Ms. Vasquez?
Yes, I do have quite a bit of questions. You mentioned funding elementary transportation. What is the impact to the budget due to the late start time?
Based on the Board's priority, we've increased our funding and, excuse me, increased our transportation availability so that we can have our students at the elementary level get to school and not have to get up at 5:30 or 6:00 in the morning. So that was done intentionally. The impact is about a $47 million ongoing cost. There is some state relief. We get a 60% based on the prior year's expenditures in the form of a grant that helps offsets our transportation costs. But we are adhering to our Board directives.
My next question is, what is the district doing to have the state mitigate the impact of late start, sorry?
What is the district doing to mitigate the impact of late start?
Yes.
Ooh, I might have to defer that question.
Well, I can answer that to some extent. You know, we had to make a decision when we did late start. And one of the decisions was, we didn't want to change everybody. You mentioned the transportation cost. We could have changed the start time for elementary school to be earlier, and the transportation cost would have been a lot less, because we could have used the same buses for elementary schools as we did for the middle and high schools. We chose not to do that, because we didn't want change across the whole district. So we didn't want parents to have to worry about changing their schedules for their high school students and their elementary students. So we paid the extra money to provide the transportation for all. We're really a unique district. Most districts don't provide transportation, other than for the students who are in special education. We're one of the few districts that still provides transportation. Just based on the distance that you live from the school, we decide we're going to offer transportation. Most surrounding districts don't offer busing for students just based on distance. Your parents have to get them there, you have to find some other way of getting there. We think it's important, because we want to make sure we provide safe transportation. And we think if we help students get here, it will increase the number of students that are successful in school.
I do have one final question. I don't know if you guys have answered this question yet or not. But my question is, would you guys say that this has caused negative or positive impact to your budget in general?
It costs more money, no doubt about it, yeah. But in the end, they did the study and said that when you allow a middle school and high school students to start later, they perform better. It's more healthy. So it's worth the investment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman.
Ms. Alexander?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions and more clarifications. So increased transportation costs includes what? What is that addressing?
The addition to more routes. We have three vendor contracts that we utilize to meet the needs of the entire district. We also have, those are also inclusive of field trips. And also, we have quite a number of students who participate in special programs across the district that have to go through a kind of a bus exchange, a hub, if you will. So all those programmatic opportunities for our kids also have increased the cost of transportation.
Okay, so it's not dealing with your acquisitions related to vehicles? It's more focused on the increased demand?
Increased demand in the, of student use and providing transportation options to all of our students.
Can I just add, and you might want to explain, Mr. Komenek? We actually benefited because we provided transportation. There was a time we were under desegregation, integration, federal mandate, where we had to provide the transportation, so it was funded. And then the state continued to fund it, even when that went away, the federal funding went away. But because we were providing transportation, now the state is funding some of that transportation. What percentage of the transportation is the state going to fund now?
Yeah, we are getting 60% of the prior year's expenditures. So that is a tremendous, at around, you know, $40 million, that's 24 million that's coming in to help offset what would otherwise have been a direct hit against our general fund. So that 60% transportation grant is very beneficial for us.
But if we had not been providing transportation, we would not have benefited from it.
I just wanted to just have a better understanding, though, of the 17 million, just how we're allocating that. But I mean, that's a good point. I just wanted to understand that better.
Ms. Husky?
I have one more question.
Oh, sorry.
No worries. The other one is in reference to continuity of service. What specifically is that covering?
Okay, so what we're doing is, is there is a timeframe to the SRR funds, September 30 of 2024. There are a number of committed facilities projects that will, in effect, exceed the date of where we would be allowed to continue spending those dollars. So what we've done is, we've moved some operational costs, which is an allowable activity under SRR three, into the SRR three program. And what that did is basically backfill our unrestricted general so that we can then commit those dollars to fulfill the commitments to the facilities projects that are consistent with the SRR three allowable activities. And those were moved into Fund 40.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Husky?
I also have a couple of questions. My first question, and you may not know all the answers to these yet, so that's, I know that things are in flux. But do you know, are they going to fully fund Prop 98 this year? I mean, 18 billion, well, over the next three years, this year, and two more outgoing. That's a lot, but do you know, have they, have you heard anything about what they're going to do with Prop 98?
LA, the Legislative Analyst Office did give a report. There are four options, if you will, that they threw out there for Governor Newsom and his team to consider that could look at some mitigating costs related to using or tapping into, whether it's the state unrestricted rainy day fund, which is right around 24, 26 billion, and/or tapping into the budget stabilization rainy day funds out of Prop 98, which is right around 8.1 billion. So utilizing those dollars to kind of lessen the fall, if you will, and kind of push it out a couple of years might be an option that the governor and his team will consider. That's why January 10th is a very sought-after and desired opportunity to see. Where do we go next?
My next question is on COLA. I mean, 1.27 seems really low, given, I mean, I know inflation has flattened a little bit, but I don't think it's flattened that much. So is that just an adjusted or an unfunded COLA? Or do they think that's the actual COLA for the last?
That's what the LAO is projecting, is 1.27 funded inflation. The inflation numbers just came out. I want to say it's right around 3, 3 and change right now, percent. So it's ticking down. That may stabilize, the Fed Reserve goes in and looks at interest rates, I think, in a couple of days. And we're talking about keeping those at status quo. But the inflationary impact is still affecting prices.
Yeah, I was like, 1.27 isn't actually going to cover.
But Ms. Husky, cost of living allowance has never been based on what they think to increase the cost of living.
Right, but sometimes they say unfunded or underfunded. So there's an actual COLA, and then there's an adjusted COLA, which is what they actually fund COLA. That's what I was trying to see, is this, is this the play with the numbers COLA?
Well, they always, they never give you money when you don't have it. It's not like, I mean, for instance, if the cost of living is really 9%, if they don't have the money, you're not going to get 9%. And right now, they don't have the money.
Yeah, and I understand that.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm thinking that's probably the reason why it's 1-point-something percent, because they don't have the money.
Okay, my last question's on the pension contributions. I think you talked about the calpers. You said it was going from 26% to 30% in round numbers?
Yes, that's correct.
And is STIRS also going? Are we going to hit both pensions?
In speaking with Ms. Huey, my understanding is that calsters will stay constant at 19.1%.
19.1, okay, so we only just have the one. And will they, because I know there was, for STIRS, there was a graduating, and then, so we've hit the level-out case. Is the 30% the level-out for PERS? Because that's ridiculous.
And it's a great question, because that following year, it actually kind of dips. So the projection they gave, there is kind of like a 2/10 of a percent dip in the most furthest out year. So is that a sign of it stabilizing, I would hope?
And I don't, because I don't know PERS as well as I know STIRS. So I wasn't sure, like, you know, because, so is the 30% like the employee and the employer contribution? So it's just employer, employer only? So it's it's just employer employer only? Or employ?
Employer only, yeah.
So then the employee contribution is a part, or does employee not contribute in PERS?
The employer, employerer. Yeah, the employer does contribute.
Employee is thirty percent, and then there's employee contribution on top of that in PERS? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Can I ask a question? And I think you have the answer because I asked it when we met previously. But was there a change when in California, no, for the county, they switched to tiers. So for the county employees, I don't know, a few years ago, the retirement system changed totally where you could previously for tier one people, you could retire at fifty, wouldn't get as much, but at fifty five, you would get two percent, and at fifty nine and a half, you would get two point five percent. And at at sixty three, you'd get three percent. Now that's all changed. You can't retire now until you're sixty seven in tier two. And the most you can get is like sixty something percent. But did that did a change occur in Cal STIRS or not?
Cal STIRS, it had the same timeframe, about two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen. It went from the two percent at sixty to the two percent at sixty two. So it did kick it up by two years.
Yeah. And I asked, and I asked a question just to state publicly to young folks that this is still a great retirement system. In order to be able to get a two percent rate at sixty two, it's still a very good retirement. So that's another incentive for folks to go into teaching because that's that retirement is forever. And so if you work thirty five years and you're sixty two, you'll get thirty percent of your salary for the rest of your life. That's a good retirement. I wish someone had talked to me about retirement when I was younger. I just got lucky. Okay, that brings us to superintendent report on the state of the district. And thank you, Mr. Coming, for a great report and your staff. Thank you.
I can get that PowerPoint up. I'd appreciate it. Well, first of all, let me just thank Terry and his team. Thank you. I know that's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes for putting together our budget report for the board, for cabinet, for community. So thank you, guys, for all the time putting forth. And you guys have done a great job keep keeping us afloat, right? So appreciate all that wisdom that you have. Let me start off also by just thanking and congratulating President or former President Wyatt and and former Vice President Danny Tillman for for managing this district and just leading us through some transitions that were important. So appreciate all your professionalism and your determination and your genuine love for the district. And congratulations to President Tillman. How many times is this now President Tillman is president?
Probably fourth time.
That's amazing.
Eighth year or something like that.
Amazing. Well, congratulations, sir, and congratulations to Vice President Myra. I was just saying, what a great story, you know, starting off as a parent, wanting to be involved, and here you are now as Vice President of the Board. So congratulations. These are great times. And to the board, I just want to thank you for just being a great board. In the short amount of time, you've gelled, you've come together as a team, you've asked the right questions. We have a genuine care for each other. So just want to show our appreciating appreciation on behalf of myself and cabinet. You see the lovely poinsettias are on the floor before you. So we'd like for you to each one of you take home, just as a small token of appreciation from from cabinet. So thank you for all you do. So today, what I'd like to do is just give a very brief kind of overview of where the district is and and where how we're working towards a vision. So it's now been eight months since my arrival in the district. And so I wanted the community to know a little bit about what my observations are. I wanted to validate some of the wishes of our community that were brought forth through our superintendent forums and our thought exchange. I want the community to know that we are working hard as an organization, will continue to work hard, to make sure that San Diego City Unified School District becomes known as a serious academic institution for learning. And so we're going to be sharing with you with some steps on how we're going to be getting there and sharing with the community the steps that we're working together as a board, as a cabinet, to get there. So next slide, please. So as you recall, I came in at an odd time in April, at the end of the school year, which actually was a blessing because it gave me the opportunity to be out in the community and to start to build that sense of community, that sense of family, and that sense of purpose. It also gave me the opportunity to take a look at the school district. You know, even though I'm homegrown, even though I worked here, twenty one years have gone by. A lot changes in twenty one years. So those three months at the end of the last year, then over the summer, gave me a great opportunity to just get out in the community. And more importantly, just get out there and greet people and smile people and see people and validate their their hard work and start to share some energy of positivity and building that sense of family. And you heard me say from the very beginning, and I'm really enjoying other people now talking about the word salabana, which is a term, a greeting in the Zulu dialect of hello. But the literal translation of that is, I see you, I hear you, I validate you. And this is what we're working as a community is to create that sense of salabana across the entire community. So it's important for us as leaders of the organization to say that when we say all means all, that we mean it and that our actions show it. And so I'm going to call upon all of us to be courageous in the coming months, that we don't just talk the talk, but we walk the talk. And so I'm going to share a little bit about how we're going to be walking that talk here in a few minutes. But more importantly, I think what this picture hopefully shows is just my genuine enthusiasm and my love for this city and this district that meant so much to me. I was sharing with somebody earlier today, you know, some people come to work to get the work done. I see people, we come to work because we feel it. And that's very exciting. And I want the community to know that I feel my job every day, and that's quite an honor. And we're going to get to it, and I'm very excited. So next slide, please. So the first thing we've done is develop ourselves as an executive team. Even though some of us had known each other many years, we really hadn't worked together, and we didn't really know each other as people. So we needed to take the time, first of all, to get to know each other as people. Who are we? What do we value? What's our story? Because everybody's story is important in terms of an organization. So we have been working very hard to get to know each other, to understand what our strengths are, but also be vulnerable and be able to identify what are the areas where we need support and areas of weakness within our, because no one is perfect. And so I really want to commend our cabinet because they've been vulnerable, they've been open, they've been trusting, and I see that growth happening with us. They are very capable people. I want to say that right now. These are some very talented people that I've wrapped myself around. And I love not being the smartest guy in the room. These are some very talented people with some great ideas. So I appreciate that they're buying into the philosophy that we don't compete against each other, we compete together, and we're a team. And if we win, everybody wins. And so I just want to reassure the community that this cabinet is working hard, that we're humble, that we're about people, and we're about doing what's best for kids. So I want everyone to feel reassured that the foundation of this district is strong, not only at the cabinet level, but the foundation of this district from the Board of Education is strong. And I heard one of the board members say to me, which which actually actually almost brought tears to my eyes, to be honest, when you talk about feeling your work, that individual said to me, you know, this is the first time I really feel in a long time that confidence to get things done in a while. And I appreciate that, and I wear that as a badge of honor. And I know I shared that story with a cabinet, and we wear that as a badge and honor. So next slide. So I wanted to remind the community, because sometimes when you're in it, you don't really see it. But I wanted to remind everybody that from two thousand and nineteen, this large organization that we call a district has been through many transitions. No fault to anyone. We just happen to have a lot of transitions that have happened in these districts in two thousand and nineteen. So I want to remind everybody how much transition has happened in the district since two thousand and nineteen. So we talked about Dr. Marchston retiring in two thousand and nineteen. Soon after that, then COVID hits, and we jump into distance learning, and the world of education changes drastically on a dime. Then we had Dr. Volkimer, who served a year as interim superintendent. Then we had Mr. Doc Irvin, who was here serving as superintendent. Then we had our administrators in charge, who served nobly, by the way, during another transition, and then I come along. So I want to remind the district and everybody in the community, that's a lot of transition for an organization. And I know we're hard on ourselves and we have high expectations, but we have to have a little grace for ourselves. When you're having four years worth of multiple transitions, the district needs time to solidify some of the systems, some of the things are placed, we need time. And I'm going to tell you right now, in the eight months that I've been here, and I've said this before, the systems that are in place, that ed services is put together in terms of our academic program are all the right things that we need to do. Now, I'm not saying we're perfect, and I'm going to share some data with you that shows that we're humble enough to know where our areas of improvement need to be, but we have some good things in place that I'm very confident are going to render some some good returns in the future about about kids. So just want to remind everybody, a lot of transitions, but the board, and I want to let everybody know in the community, because everyone's afraid when you have a superintendent, you know, come in. I'm committed to be here many years, as long as the board will have me, and we're committed to making a big difference. So there's no transition, there's no other stepping stone for me. This is my stepping stone, is coming back home. So I want to alleviate that pressure out in the community. Next slide, please. So what I had the opportunity to do in July was just to start to relearn the San Diego City Unified School District. If you recall, I called it with an open mind and an open heart. And that was a great experience to get direct qualitative feedback from many people. And the picture you see there is just some of our community members and employees from one of the superintendent forums. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what those were. Next slide, please. So if you recall, I had the opportunity to schedule some community forums. So we had an opportunity to meet in person. You see those dates at San G, at the P D C, at Middle College, and the Board of Education. Had the opportunity to hear directly from not only staff, but community and students who attended, and we had really good attendance, and I really, really appreciated that. It was those are good moments and good opportunities to hear directly from our constituency. We also had our thought exchange, using that software to get authentic feedback from our community. I'll talk a little bit about the details. That was highly successful, when you see the numbers that were involved. I also had the opportunity to meet with as many district partners as I could during that timeframe, whether there be elected officials, whether they be lifelong residents, whether they were department heads within our organization, meeting with the board one on one when I first arrived here, and meeting with many community-based organizations to hear their perception of what the district is like and what is needed. And then, of course, the school visits have been invaluable. And I want the board to know and the community to know that when I go see schools, I'm not just looking at classrooms, I'm looking at safety, I'm looking at curb appeal, I'm looking at customer service as we walk in, I'm looking at instruction, I'm looking at the how our classrooms look, and I'm talking to students. That's the most important part. And as we venture down into our multi-year vision, I'm going to be setting up more intentional forums to be talking with our ASB kids directly, with some of our student leadership group that we have here in the district, so that I can hear firsthand from our customers about what's missing, what's working, what needs polishing, and what we need to be thinking about. So this was a great time for me to really get to meet a lot of people and hear their perspective. Next slide. So talking about thought exchange, if you remember, there was three essential questions that I used. What's working? What needs polishing? What's missing? And this is a software program that I had used successfully in another district for some of our LCAP community feedback. And so I wanted to try it out here. I believe it was used once before during distance learning, but it didn't get a lot of steam because we were in distance learning, right? It was hard, you had to train parents how to use a software program. But this was a great program for us to use this time around. And just to remind everybody in the audience, this is a survey where people can write their authentic thoughts into the software program in a narrative form. And they can write one, they can write five, they can write ten, they can write a hundred. And then all the readers then get an opportunity to rate each one of those thoughts from one to five. If it's five, it was very important. If it's one, it's not something that was deemed as important. So that feedback from the community, which comes from them, really painted a great picture that I'm going to show you here in a few seconds. So next slide. So the data can be disaggregated in different ways, but I'm going to start with probably the easiest part, where it just gives you an automatic word doodle. Never thought the word doodle would be something that we would use officially in a public setting, but the word doodle. But I want to explain what that means. As part of the process, the system identifies the most used words, and then I can go into the data and disaggregate why it was there. So I just want to share a few things and some few transparencies out. So you see at the top, the word superintendent was prominent. It's bigger. So the bigger the size of the word, the more prominent that word was used. So our community in that feedback wanted to make sure that we have a superintendent that's visible in the community, visible at school sites, has positivity, and was going to stay with the district multi-years. So again, I think I've answered that question, and that's important to me to be on the school site. So I'm glad that the community and I see eye to eye on that. The second word you see is admin. And that conversation was about making sure that as a new superintendent, I took a look at the organization of the district and decide if there were positions, high-level positions, that we either needed or didn't need. And so if you recall, many months ago, I did make the decision to eliminate one of the assistant superintendent positions in the department in order to free up resources to add more campus security offices to our to our schools. And to Chief Polino's credit and H R, I think for the first time in a while, all of our C S O positions are filled across the district. So great work to all of you. I know I've gone to a few schools already where the principals have said, I have my full team, and they are watching the perimeter of schools and interacting with kids. So thank you for everyone's effort on that. I also want to let the community know, because I know people have been wondering, what's he going to do with the deputy superintendent position? Well, I've made the decision that that position is not something that right now the district is needing. So that position, I will be asking Human Resources and Business Services to delete the position of deputy superintendent and end the department. At this point, we believe that with the cabinet level that we have and the expertise that we have, and the way that Superintendent Irvin and our administrators in charge at the time broke the districts up into clusters, we believe that's a great model, and I believe it's a great model where we can monitor and supervise our schools. So we will be eliminating that position from the budget. So I want to make sure that the community knows, we've heard, we've analyzed, and we're making that decision. You'll also see that the word classified is bolded. And we received a lot of feedback about the perception that our hiring for classified positions is not where it should be. And so we hear you, and we're going to be working with those systems. No one is here to do a bad job. Everybody's here open to hear how we can make systems better. So I want the community to know that we've heard, and we're going to be working on seeing how we can make those systems better to make sure that we are filling classified positions at a faster rate so that we can get that support out to the school sites as quickly as possible. Then you'll also see the word principals as highlighted. And that was great feedback. And what that feedback was, and I'll share some information here in a little bit, but our principals, when you look at our principals and assistant principals, many of the people that are in those positions have been either principals or vice principals less than three years. And when you think about that, some of those years within that three-year span, we were still kind of in distance learning and coming out of distance learning. So they really haven't had those true years of experience. So many of those administrators are saying, we need help, we need support, we need training. So I want them to know that we heard you, and we are working on that. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of those plans that we have moving forward. Next slide, please. So when I said this was highly successful, if you remember, we ran two thought exchanges, one with the community and one with our high school students. This reflects some of the information that we received from our community. So we had over a thousand participants who'd submitted almost twelve hundred thoughts, and we had twenty seven thousand ratings on those thoughts. That is great feedback when you talk about numbers, qualitative or quantitative numbers to a survey. And you'll see some of the highest rated And you'll see some of the, um, highest rated, um, issues that our community wants us to talk about. And I've mentioned a few of them. Obviously our HR, uh, Personnel Commission hiring of classified needs, we're going to work on that. There's also a request for us to take a look at some of our systems and how we staff our special education department. And that's a legitimate request. We're going to be looking at how we can always improve. Uh, we had some feedback about, um, our split vice principals and how that system can work a little better. And then just in general, talking about, um, our special education programs, how we can make those better. So we want to make sure that everyone knows, we receive this information with great humility and great responsibility and we are determined to try to work and see if we could meet not only our own expectations, but the expectations of our community. Next slide, please. I also want the community to know that we hear you in terms of, we are very proud and they're very happy about the family engagement work that this district has been involved in over the years. So you have my commitment and promise that we're going to continue to develop and work on our family engagement programs. It was very loud and clear that you, uh, value the community engagement and the community partnerships that the district has created over the years. So you have my commitment that, that will continue and we'll continue to build those community engagements. And then what was mentioned today by Mr. Navarro and some of our guests, uh, Joe Baca, wellness is something that, uh, our community wants us to keep focused on. And you can see that we are committed, uh, to creating not only wellness centers, but continue to provide support mechanisms for our students that are paid for either through our general fund, through specialized funds, or even through our LCAP because it's an important priority for our community. So, uh, we hear you, community, and we're going to continue, uh, to work on that. Next slide. Our student exchange was wonderful. We had 3,800 high school students, uh, participate and provided 3,500 thoughts and 76,000 ratings. Amazing. Thank you, high school students, because your voice is heard. And what they came back to us with, um, is, you know, our restrooms need some work and they need some, some guidance, they need some supervision, we don't feel safe. And so I know, uh, Terry and I have already been having some conversations about how we can make sure that our bathrooms are somewhere that are safe, clean, uh, and comfortable, uh, for our students to use. And another request was just shade, having more shade. And, you know, many times we think shade is expensive because we have to build structures, not necessarily so. I know Terry's done a great job as he's been buying new, um, outdoor furniture, uh, like the lunch table, et cetera, making sure that we're buying the tables that have the umbrella holes. That is the cheapest way to provide good shade for our students to congregate either to eat lunch, et cetera, is to buy umbrellas, right? And schools can buy the umbrellas with their school colors. And I know some of our schools have already started doing that. So not only is it providing the shade, but it's making the campus feel like you're on vacation, like you're in Cancun, right? So, um, so we appreciate the kids, the students, our scholars being honest with us because sometimes there are easy solutions to big problems. Next slide. Now this was great because this has been predictable in every district I've been with. Food options, right, guys? Food options is something that came up high. So I know I've been working with Terry and, and, uh, we are going to bring back our, uh, working with our kids and maybe do some food tastings and work with our nutrition services so that they can have input, uh, that maybe give us some ideas that we can work within the criteria that the federal government has for us in terms of, of food options. And we heard a couple of other things. More opportunities for field trips to get beyond San Bernardino. And we know, I know growing up here as a kid, many times you don't go beyond three-mile radius of your home. And so we do want to give our kids those experiences beyond, uh, what's in front of us. So I appreciate that honesty, uh, from all of your colleagues. So let them know that, that we hear them. And, um, they want to continue to focus on security, so I appreciate that. And then here's our big challenge for us, guys, and we're going to work hard on this one. You've been asking us for financial wellness, financial planning, and how do we, uh, work with, uh, finances and credit and applications? So our commitment is to work on that, uh, this year and hopefully get something rolling. It's a little more robust for the following year. So thank you, guys, for your honesty and thank all your colleagues. Uh, next slide. So you heard me earlier talk about how we want to make sure that Sanrio City Unified School District outside of our district is seen as a, a high level of academic learning institution. So next slide. I think we will all agree, and I think we all do agree, that the test data that our district that we've earned over the last couple, it's not where we want to be. And I don't believe it's reflective of the great staff that we have out there doing work because I'm in classrooms every day. I see the great work. Um, so that means we need to do a little bit of a push, right? So I've challenged our, uh, our staff, ourselves, our principals, our teacher support staff, that we can move the needle if we all work together. So my challenge to us, to me, to our kids, to our staff, is to save in a couple of years, we can go from 23, 18, 90 to 50, 50, 95. I think we can do it. Let me rephrase that. I know we can do it. If we put our heads together and we create some uniformity, some collaboration, as Barbara Pacheco said earlier today, we're working together, we can get to that 50, 50, 95 and we will. And, uh, our kids deserve that. So we're going to continue working hard. Uh, I know Anna Applegate, uh, in her department has done great work putting together systems that, uh, speak to, um, reading, writing, EL. Um, you know, we're, we're focused on our ETS department, our special education students. So a lot of good stuff is happening. It's not where we want it to be, but we're working on it and I think with a little bit of consistency and continued focus on it, we will get there. Next slide. So here's what we are going to be very laser-like, uh, in terms of priorities moving forward, is we need to continue to have those successes, uh, in our ELL department. And we've had great data over the years in terms of the number of kids that transition. And we believe that with the focus that the CD has us on with designated and integrated ELD and the very robust training that we're doing now across the entire district, that you're going to start to see, uh, those reclassification numbers return to where they were pre-pandemic. And our hope is obviously, as we continue to develop our dual immersion programs, that we'll also start to see a higher number of kids learning their seal of biliteracy and that is a goal. I also want the community to know that Board Policy 6012.1, which was established in the year 2007, which is our African-American student achievement, is going to be of the highest priority as well for this cabinet in this district. We are going to walk that talk that we've been talking about since 2007 of making sure that we are closing that gap and that our African-American students are achieving at a rate that is equal to all of their colleagues. So we're excited to be working with, with Anna and Dr. Greer and everyone in that department to really start to push that work forward and really get the results that we've been, uh, hoping for and wishing for over the years. And of course, this is no surprise to the board and the community. We want to continue our focus on increasing A through G completion, making sure that all student groups are represented in that A through G completion, uh, opportunity. And also continue to improve and enhance and increase our dual enrollment opportunities across the district so that our kids have an opportunity, uh, to even get into junior college. I really liked, uh, Secretary Cardona just said a couple of weeks ago at the federal level that we need to move away from this four-year college or bust model, right? There are other options that we need to prepare our kids for, either four-year college, junior college opportunities, or career. And so I'll jump into a career in a little bit, but we're also going to have a major push on making sure that our students are involved in STEM, uh, K-12. So what does that mean? We're talking about coding, programming and computer science, starting with the kids from the very beginning. So, uh, these will be some of our laser-like, um, priorities that we will be working on as part of our 2030 vision. Next slide, please. So I want to focus the entire district on just one real linear approach to how we're going to be looking at student improvement across the district. And so you have to have benchmarks. So we're going to be very focused on making sure that we know when kids leave preschool, when kids leave TK, what is it that we want them to know in order to be successful and be prepared for the next benchmark, which is third grade reading proficiency and also third grade early numeracy. So we're building systems, assessments that are going to help us to make sure that we know what we want a kid to know when they leave preschool, so they're prepared to be successful when they leave third grade, as we know that predictor in terms of, uh, reading proficiency. Then the next benchmark being fifth and sixth grade math complexity, then being that ninth grade algebra or integrated math, as we call here in the district, so that when we do get the kids by 11th grade, we start to see a trajectory of achievement data where the line is going up, heading out to 11th grade. I also appreciate the district's focus on writing across the curriculum. Uh, we're going to be very focused on building that. And, and then most importantly, the gift of the MOU Monday, the professional learning community that the district has been able to work in collaboration with the union leaders. That is incredible valuable time that our teachers have in order to assess data, to create lessons, uh, to reteach, uh, to share effective practices and also to identify the additional support that kids have. This board, I credit you, thank you for all the support that you've given principals. They have so much support at the school sites where they can run effective and efficient intervention programs. I know at the elementary level, I keep talking about the reading intervention programs that are just stellar, where we have multiple people, not just one teacher, but multiple people working with groups of kids at, at each time, specifically on the elements of the science of reading. And I know that's been a conversation that's come up a lot is, are we a balanced literacy district or are we a science of reading district? Well, my observations tell me in the work that I've seen Anna and her team put together is, I'm seeing science of reading because I see phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary fluency and comprehension being part of our TK3 experience and also part of the intervention experience as kids move into older ages. So, um, we are in good shape, uh, with that. So I also want to point out that we're going to continue working on John Hattie's work on teacher clarity. I see it consistently across the district. Our teachers are buying into it and I appreciate that they're sticking to it. And I also want to thank our secondary teachers because I think this is important, that we're looking at our grading practices, uh, through our work with Doug Reeves and, uh, good things are happening. So this is something that we will continue to focus on moving forward. Next slide. We are going to be taking a look at some program refinement, as I call it. Uh, we currently have a task force that's working on our virtual academy program. We have a committee of staff members and, uh, taking a look at how can we make our virtual academy be something that is more robust and will attract more students to try to find an alternative way of learning? As you know, a lot of parents out in the community, not just our community, anywhere, they're starting to look for other opportunities for students to learn as opposed to the comprehensive setting. And our district has done a great job coming out of distance learning, developing this virtual academy and adding more features. We had an opportunity to hear the details of that program on Monday. Wonderful job that the principal has done. And so we want to make sure that we create a world-class virtual academy program. So stay tuned, we'll be coming back with some recommendations, uh, to the board probably in the coming months. We also, in talking with Dr. Greer, we, we, we acknowledge and we recognize that we need to work at our Sankofa program, that the intent of that program still isn't where we want it to be when it was first created several, several years ago. So we are committed to putting resources, time and effort to making sure that the Sankofa program is something that is, um, where the district wanted it to be several years ago, which was supposed to be inclusive of culturally sensitive, uh, instruction, making sure that our kids saw aspirational figures, uh, and opportunities, uh, to celebrate their culture, not only within themselves, but with the entire community. So we're going to be working on that Sankofa program in the coming months. We're also going to be looking at our CTE programs, very proud of the CTE programs that we have in this district. Amazing. And I say that, uh, with, with plenty of evidence, uh, that we have amazing programs. What we need to take a look at is making sure that the programs that we have in place continue to grow, that they are indeed what the workforce data shares that this workforce community needs, uh, for our kids and to make sure that we're preparing them for a livable wage if they choose to go into the workforce after high school. And then you'll see the fourth thing here is, we're really focused on trying to see how we can create paid student internships for our students. And so we'll, we'll be working on that. Several months ago, several years ago, the Workforce Development Board had a program. It went away. I'm on that board now. So that will be a conversation that I will hope to lead, uh, that we can create more opportunities for our kids to earn a little money, right? While they're learning and then create that network so that if they choose to go into the workforce right after high school, they're ready to go, they know the skill and they have that connection, that network. So next slide, great picture, by the way. I remember that from, uh, that little kid was cute, right? We are focused, as I said earlier, on making sure that we're building the capacity of our principals. I just want to share you with this data that I wanted to share with you earlier. Eighteen of our 48 elementary principals have less than three years of principal experience. Five of our 11 middle school principals have less than three years of experience. Four of our high school principals have less than three years of experience. And keep in mind, we currently have, uh, Cajon High School open. So our principals are crying for, uh, pleading for more support, more building capacity and we are doing that. Uh, commend, uh, commendations to Anna and Sandra who have put together great trainings for our principals and our assistant principals. Let me give you some data on our assistant principals. Nineteen of our 26 elementary principals, less than three years as administrator. Middle school, 10 of our 20, less than three years. High school, 10 of our 22, less than three years. Keep in mind, of those three years, two of those were COVID years. So we have a lot of need and we are going to be working on the capacity of our district. But I, what I want to focus the attention of the board and the community is that last line. Again, culture shift. The district office, we're here to support our schools, not the other way around. And so we're creating that atmosphere that we're here, we live to exist, to support our schools, to continue to achieve. And I want to give everybody kudos across the district office. They've been out at the school sites. I've seen them, they're working, they're putting together staff development and I appreciate that everybody's adopting that philosophy, that we are here for schools, not the other way around. So thank you very much, everybody, for, uh, tying in on that. Next slide. I've also asked Mary Roan, I've charged Mary Roan with putting together a marketing plan for the district because here's what I've learned and I think all of you kind of know all this. There are so many great things that are happening in this district that people outside of our district don't know and sometimes, sometimes we don't even know it. And so we have a commitment of putting together a two-year marketing plan where we're going to use all the different avenues that you see there to highlight people, programs, employees, students, accomplishments and just what our facilities look like. The question was being asked earlier where, why have all the kids gone and what are we going to do to try to bring kids back? One of the charges that I've given Mary Roan is part of our marketing plan is seeing if we can bring back 2,000 students to the district because people are going to start to hear about our programs, because our programs are going to be highlighted, because our schools are looking great, right? Because we're moving into the 21st century in terms of the STEM offerings, uh, that our kids want and the virtual academy, because now we're offering a different alternative. So our goal is to try to bring back at least 2,000 students in the coming years, uh, with those programs. So Mary Roan, I know that's a lot of pressure, but I know that you are going to make us shine because we have a lot of reasons that happen every day to make this district shine, which brings me to the next slide. This, for the first time, you are starting to see kind of the template of what our multi-year vision is going to be titled. SBCUSD shines 2030, cultivating purposeful futures for students right here in this district. And this is not going to replace making hope happen. This is going to be in addition to making hope happen. We are building on the legacy of all the work that people have done in this district over the years and we're going to continue to make hope happen and we're going to shine at the same time. So you see, I won't read through it, but you'll see what shine stands for. We're talking about safe, secure, the high expectations, involvement of students, family, community, nutrition, wellness, mental health, equity is a lens and San Bernardino is strong. Now what you should see are the words that you saw in that word doodle. This is what our community is asking for. This is a match congruent to what our feedback is saying. So we are excited to, uh, start to create this vision. The board is working with a consultant, uh, now. So we hope that by March, the board will be giving me direction and district direction on what will be the objectives that we fill in within each one of those letters, the S, the H, the I, the N and the E. So, uh, we're looking forward to that. And having said that, next slide. Let me conclude with just starting our first elements of how San Bernardino City Unified School District shines. So I want to highlight a few people. So this is Jeffrey Torres and you might notice Jeff, he's sitting in the audience. And Jeffrey is a Sanrio High School graduate, class of 2011. This young man just passed the bar. He is waiting on just some paperwork. He's moving from law clerk to attorney with Atkinson, Addison Lawyer, Rude and Roma. He's chosen a route in education and Sandra Rodriguez was his principal at Sanrio High School. And she shared with me that one day, this young man walked up to her at school and said, you know, I think one day I'm going to be a lawyer. Bingo, here we are. Jeffrey, congratulations, we're very proud of you, man. Very proud of you. Making us shine. Next slide. Here's another reason, uh, our district shines. Richard Tejera, teacher at Curtis Middle School, math teacher. He was just- He was just a Region 10 finalist for Educator of the Year for the California League of Educators, and he was recognized this past Friday. Another example of how the district shine. Let's give it up for Richard, I know he's probably watching. Next slide. Terrible Terry Washington. He is a 2022 Sierra High School graduate. He is a understudy of Mr. Terry Boykins, you might recognize that name. This young man is at the U.S. Olympic Trials, and he's made it into the final session, which starts on January 6th. And so we're rooting for him, that hopefully he will make the U.S. Olympic team for the next Olympics coming up. SBCUSD shining. Next slide. And of course, Jaden Daniels, Heisman Trophy winner, AP Player of the Year, and just today we found out he's first-team All-American, Cajon High School graduate of 2019. I have not met this young man, but it's amazing his reputation, that he is humble, he is kind, he loves community, he loves San Bernardino, he loves his teammates, and he's a leader. And I just can't wait to organize this parade for him in January. Again, guys, big round of applause. San Bernardino City Unified shines. Next page. So I just want to say thank you to everybody, thank you for your patience. We're almost about three months away from getting that final multi-year vision. So happy holidays, happy new year, and it's a great day in San Antonio City Unified and a great day in San Bernardino. Thank you so much for allowing me this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ariano, great presentation, really appreciate it. I would like to allow our student board members to give their presentations.
Do I need to move, to move the agenda or make a motion to move the agenda?
Just let them talk.
Sorry, I just was trying to do it the right way. So I move that we to amend, amend the agenda? To allow 16.1 to go now, student board member report?
Okay.
Move the second vote, please? I'm going to let Ms. Preciado go first.
You did. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jimena Preciado, representing San Gregonio High School. I'm very honored to stand with you guys today. First and foremost, I would like to share my experience of the California State Board of Education. It was an amazing experience that I got to experience, not only with Dr. Martinez or with Ms. Post, but also with my colleagues. And not only just my colleagues, but to just be open and to have the opportunity to network with other students from other boards. It was just like, just amazing opportunity. And, you know, we're the only district that has nine school board members, and all the other districts were like, oh, probably only one or two, maximum three. So it was really cool for us to have nine school board members. I really did value just having that opportunity. We went over LCAP, we went over the Brown Ag, we went over the budget, we went over the strategies that allows you to get through these tough steps of your life, but with education that plays a pivotal role. And I really did realize that networking is really important, but you guys really did make this possible, and I would just like to just give thanks to all of you guys on the board, because you guys truly do make hope happen, and this really opened my eyes, not just to me, but for all colleagues. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Preciado, and I want to give a special thanks to Ms. Chusky. We got to blame her for the nine school board members, I thought it was kind of crazy, but it really did work out. I love the way you guys rotate in and give your input. You all have been wonderful, so it worked out great. But a lot of the credit has to go to Ms. Chusky. She loves this kind of work, and now that she's retired, she was able to put 100% into you all. Next, I'll go with Ms. Vasquez.
Good evening, board members and public. My name is Silvana Vasquez, a senior at San Gregonio High School. It is my absolute pleasure to be here with you all. Before I begin, I would like to say congratulations to our new president, Danny Tillman, and vice president, Myra Sebalos of the Board of Education, and thank you, Mr. Scott Wyatt, for being our president for the past two years. To the public, thank you for taking the time to come and show your care for the San Bernardino City Unified School District. To start off, I would like to discuss the SBCUSD Student Board Member San Francisco Conference. Thank you, board members, for giving the student board members a wonderful opportunity to gain knowledge and meet other student board members. The San Francisco Conference was successful and has opened my eyes to various issues that occur throughout the Board of Education. I am especially grateful for how much our Board of Education offers. Having this opportunity has given me the chance to work with other districts and get to know the struggles that they deal with. They have helped me realize how blessed and grateful it is to be in a district that offers an open mind and great opportunities. Moving on to schools, I would like to report on San Gregonio sports. The girls' basketball is off to an exciting season, the girls have improved, the girls have improved so much as individuals, and they're only getting better. Their preseason was a bit of a rough start, but they worked incredible as a team to pull it off. The coach would like to dedicate the whole team for pushing hard and giving it their all this season. The girls' water polo coach, Coach Olivia, also would love to report out on their season. This year's girls' water polo is off to a great start. Although the numbers are slow, they are pushing through and are looking forward to their new pool. Thank you for the new pool, guys. Their senior leaders are giving a great effort to empower and lead by example as their team faces their successes and shortcomings. They have a powerful underclass that is passionate and ready for their battles. The girls' water polo team is working incredibly hard. Although they haven't seen many wins, they are excited to put in the work to make it to the CIF playoffs. They would love to give a special shout out to the guard, Jamie Masters, and their set, Brenda Morales. They play the most difficult positions in the pool and continue to work hard when confronted with challenges in the pool. Keep up the good work starting girls' water polo and girls' basketball, as well as the other winter sports. Finally, I would like to just one final thing regarding the late start times, which is a quick preview to what I will discuss on what I have agendized. I have talked to the Office of Assemblymember, James Ramos, and they will now connect me with the legislative team to discuss further action. They have provided excellent help and will continue to help me provide a voice for many students. I am excited to create a positive impact in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Nunez.
Evening, everyone. My name is Antonio Hernandez. I am a senior at Aurora Valley. And recently, me, myself, and along with the rest of the student board members, had the opportunity to, to attend the CSBA training in San Francisco. There we got the chance of networking with other student board members across the state, participate in activities during CSBA training, during the CSBA training, and explore San Francisco. It was an exciting trip and definitely, definitely a memorable one. And also, my first time flying on a plane, so that was really exciting. When we were going up, it just, it just felt so like, I don't know, just didn't feel real. Yeah, I'm really grateful for the opportunity, and I would want to mention something that happened during the CSBA meeting, which was the word of the morning, which was, for two students, it was San Bernardino, so I think that was really exciting. Yeah, so just to clarify, it wasn't our students that said that, it was other students across, another students across California that said that, and it was just funny. And on that trip, with the help of my peers, they really helped me like find my voice. For example, I would practice individually with basically everyone, with everyone else on the trip, just talking and how to interact with other people, so that they could help me prepare to network with other students, because I did have like a really hard time interacting with other students. And overall, my experience in San Francisco was awesome.
Right before, Mr. Nunez. And Ms. Preciado and Ms. Vasquez. I'd like to ask that we move, I don't know, this probably was Mickey's bad idea, but we shouldn't have student reports at So it shouldn't be 16.1. Let's put them, let's move them up to where we have them now in terms of action items, I think square. Right, so it should be within the 10.1, okay? Yes.
I would just like to finish off by giving thanks to you guys again, because I am also ASB member of San Gregonio, and every year we go to a CATA trip, which is a conference that is held at Disneyland, and that is kind of similar to the Board of Association, but with students across California, but that are in, involved with ASB, and that also gives us a chance of networking, and I just think that plays a pivotal role in not only just myself, but the people in ASB. So thank you guys very much.
You're welcome. And it's not by accident, we spend a lot of money on transportation and, and encourage the field trips, because we understand the value of it. So when I see all these buses all around the district, and I want to thank Mr. Komenek and his Transportation Department, Maria, I know it's challenging, but it's just a beautiful sight to see all these school buses and charter buses taking our students to all these different places across California, because I know it's benefiting them. Thank you. And that brings us to sponsorship. 11.1. Be resolved Board of Education approved sponsorships of the San Bernardino MCP Sixth Annual Kwanzaa Celebration on December 31st in the amount of, what are they asking for? Who brought this forward? The one for Endo ACP?
That's on air, contribution of $1,000.
It's $1,000? Okay. So it's for $1,000. Let's handle these separately. So I make a motion to approve this sponsorship for
I would second that.
Endo ACP? It's being moved in second. Let's vote on that one first.
Kwanzaa one, right? Kwanzaa ball?
Oh, we had the discussion? Okay.
So that, but that's for
This is the Kwanzaa.
Yes, okay, just making sure, yes.
So we have Ms. Rosales Medina?
The second, and so
Are you going to have any comment?
Well, no, I just, I was going to motion, but I do support this one.
Move the second. Dr. Wyatt?
No, I just was looking over it, and thank you for providing this, it helps out a little bit. Because my questions are going to be, you know, how does it impact our district, our community? And I see that we're honoring some staff on there, so that helped, thank you.
Let's vote, please? And Mr. Nunez? Ms. Preciado?
Excuse me, real quick, Ms. Sebalos, I don't have your vote. It just popped up, thank you.
Preciado?
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
The next one is the item for the 30th annual Mesa Legacy Gala on April 11, 2024. What are they asking for?
That's $3,000.
And what does this organization do?
I have, have questions.
Yes.
So when you look at the website, it's a faith-based type of organization, and so they, even with one of their focuses, it says that we keep God at the center of our work and trust Him perfect. So the thing is that I would like for our attorneys to just make sure that we're not going to violate by providing funds, because there, there is state laws that prohibit us.
We'll table it till we get a legal opinion.
All right, thank you.
Can you bring it back to us, Ms. Ariano? Thank you very much. That brings us to number 12, action items, personnel report, 12.1.
I'm sorry, you skipped over 11.2, sir.
Oh, yeah. Okay, sorry about that. 11.2, San Bernardino County District Advocates for Better Schools. This one keeps coming back, this is like the item that never dies. I don't know, okay, so we have Ms. Morales, and then Ms. Chusky. Go ahead, Ms. Medina.
Excuse me, President Tillman, we do have a public comment for that.
Okay, Gil Navarro?
Good evening, Board President Danny Tillman and Vice President Myra Sebalos. My name's Gil Navarro. On the streets, I'm known as an education advocate. Federal regulations refer me as a non-attorney representative. And I agree with you, Mr. Tillman, this thing keeps coming back. And I'm asking the board not to approve it tonight. And let me tell you why, I mentioned it last time. This committee is a secret committee. You cannot get information from it, nobody can give comment, public comments on it, and to me, it's disguised as a PAC, because they collect money politically, they do things politically, they have sponsored legislation against charter schools. And I'm ready to file a FPPC complaint on this because of the fact that, to me, it's disguised as a committee, it's really a PAC. So saying that, I'm appealing to all of you that, that you don't approve this. And then as a friendly, excuse me, reminder to Dr. Wyatt, just trying to help you out, because you're an employee of the county superintendent of schools, I'm recommending strongly that you reclude yourself from this item, since you're an employee of the San Pedro County Superintendent of Schools. Want to keep you out of trouble here. So I did want to ask one thing on, we talked about, excuse, I think I'm getting a sore throat. We talked about declining enrollment. I'll be honest with you, if you tighten up on your attendance
Mr. Navarro, you had an order, your, your item is for 11.2.
I know, I know, but I was trying to be helpful here.
Yeah, I'm just trying to help you.
If you tighten up on attendance, I think that'll compensate for the loss of declining enrollment.
Thank you. Next would be Ms. Rosales Medina?
And I, and I also agree, when you look at their pamphlet, and thank you so much for adding the attachments as well, they have like a pamphlet, and it shows that they're getting the same advice that we're getting, that we're already paying for through our school district, which doesn't make any sense. And so that's Capital Advisors Group. So I would, I wouldn't, for me personally, I don't like to hire two different, or pay for two different services when we're already getting a direct, directly from them, the advice, when it comes to what, what bills are out there, which one we kind of push, and which ones. So basically, we already have our own lobbyists that we can support, so thank you.
Be Ms. Myra Sebalos, then Ms. Myra Sebalos, then Mr. Husky, then Dr. Scott Wyatt, in that order.
Thank you. I think there's a lot of misconception about what Sand Dabs is and does, and the difference between a political action committee and the difference between a political action committee, um, uh, which, um, normally provides funding for candidates or issues and those that do lobbying or do legislative work in trying to, um, assist schools and school districts in, um, accessing, um, a variety of things that help them. It's, uh, and if you look at what their, their platform is, it's really, um, in line with a lot of the things that we already want to do. I, my concern with not being a part of Sandabs is that we're not at the table. And, you know, lobbyists, um, you know, they're, they, they also use capital advisors and, um, but they do what that group wants to do, so they could advise them one way and us another way if what we're wanting to accomplish is something different than what the rest of the county wanted to accomplish. So, um, their job isn't to, a lobbyist's job isn't, or a lobbying firm isn't to tell you what to advocate, it's to do the advocating for you. So they can have multiple clients within or, or outside of education and, you know, present issues on behalf of those clients that aren't necessarily even in alignment, right? So. You know, I think that, that, like, what, in, you know, back at the turn of the century, um, you know, I, I was part of the community coal, county community coalition where we had superintendents, community members, union presidents, all at the table, um, having discussions. This was post, uh, Prop, what was that prop, the, whatever the voucher, two two four? Is that the prop, the, the voucher one ninety, what was the voucher, I can't even remember the number anymore, it's been so long. But, um, you know, we're really trying to talk about what do we as a county want to accomplish? And how do we work together to make sure that the county, that all the, you know, the, the school districts, the counties, are working together to, to accomplish, um, the mission together. You know, we have a very, there's thirty-three districts within the county. There are many things that, you know, that, that we might be able to help our smaller brothers and sisters with, you know, um, in, in the high desert or, or in the West End. I mean, there's times where they can come together to help the larger districts with, you know, issues that we want. But I think it's really important to be, you know, San Bernardino County has been innovative in so many ways and I think it's really important for us to all be at the same table, working together to accomplish our goals. And I think Sandabs is one good way of doing that, I understand and I've heard the concerns and read the concerns. And I'm, you know, I'm not in any way attempting to be dismissive of those because I, I do hear what, what you're saying or what has been said or written to us. I just, like, I, like, in my experience, when you're not on, uh, when you're not at the table, you're on the table. And, you know, I think we should be as one of our districts, uh, you know, the district being part of and be at the table, be part of the conversation, work with our county, um, colleagues, um, in concert so that we can get, especially now as we're going into some bad economic times, this is a time where we all need to band together to make sure that we get the dollars that our students deserve in the county, and I think it's going to be really important that we work together as we, as we try to, you know, defend Prop ninety-eight and the allocations to San Bernardino County.
Subios?
Thank you so much, um. So over the time that this has come back, I think that there is maybe some misconceptions. My biggest concern with this item is that when I think about collaboration and I think about unity, that should very much include our charter schools, communities. And so if they're reaching out and they're saying, hey, there's something going on, now, I don't know the details. I don't know the ins and outs of what the conflict is or where the conflict has arisen, but if there is legislation or there's history in the past where they've felt or where legislation or policies have been pushed forward that have affected them, um, then, then they're not having that opportunity. And in our county or in our, you know, bounds, we have several charter schools here. And a lot of times you know that students that go to charter schools is because the school district or the school system has not worked for them. And so that is my biggest concern. I put the responsibility back on Sandabs and back on the charter organizations to work together. And once that issue and that problem is resolved, come back. Because I do see the benefit in what, uh, you're saying, Ms. Chusky, but I just want to make sure that that's an important piece that we're not leaving out. And so, um, until I can get some information from the Sandabs organization that they're, and, and from the charter schools, that they're working in collaboration and in tandem together, I don't think I can support this item moving forward, so that's kind of where I stand.
As Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, President, uh, Tillman. Um, you know, I've been on the wire on this one for a while, but, uh, some of the biggest, and Ms. Navarro, thank you always for, you know, looking out for me and giving me good advice. For the record, I always recuse myself or abstain when it comes to county schools, whether it's paid or unpaid service, so thank you. Um, on this one here, and, and this goes along with what you said right now, Ms. Subios, and, um, one of the reasons why I think we should go back and be on Sandabs, one, because we're the biggest district in the counties and we have no students, so we should have a voice at the table and working with our local, um, uh, districts as well as our local, uh, politicians and advocates as well. But my one big concern that did come up, and I have been very vocal about this, is why is charter schools not at the table? So, you know, one of my things is if we were to join Sandabs, I would be relentless in saying, why are they not there? So if we're talking about all students, we're talking about all students, period. And they are our students, they're here in our city, right, they live in this city. So I consider them definitely to be our students and charter schools should be a part of Sandabs. That would be a big push of mine, um, and I know they also need a lot of support there for special ed. You know, and that myself is one of my areas of expertise, um, you know, I've worked a long time in special ed, so whether it's me or somebody on this board, I know that we would have a strong voice at the table for special ed education and both charter schools, so that's something I would like to see definitely represented there and by us. Um, hopefully leading that charge. I know I see a lot of folks that I've worked with in the past on their board currently and I think very highly of most of these folks here, if not all of them. So I know that they're there for the right reasons. Ricky Aliassi, if you don't know him, he's out in the West End, he's done a phenomenal job with special ed. I didn't know he was on there, but I'm surprised to see on, him on there, but very pleased. Um, and just, you know, Sherman Garnett, longtime friend of mine, who has definitely been a very strong advocate for our marginalized, not promised kids, um, our homeless kids, foster youth, McKinley Bento, and, uh, just a number of names on here that I've seen that I've worked with for over twenty years that I know they're truly in it for the right reason and education for the right reason. I don't see them being it for the wrong reason. And if you look at the representatives that are part of this, uh, um, committee, from United States Senators, House of Representatives, California Senators, California Assembly Members, it's a long list of folks that I think, um, could support us greatly in the times to come, so those are my comments, thank you. And I will support it.
Arielle and Grunder?
Uh, I'm in agreement with, uh, Myra, I, I met, uh, most of these people, these wonderful people at the County Board for the gatherings are there when I first began. And I remember sitting next to, uh, Dr. Wyatt and the, this issue of Sandabs came up and he mentioned, he says, well, we haven't been on it for a while, and then I asked around and I said, well, what is Sandabs? You know, I was new and I wanted to know, well, and I heard a couple of things and the one I remember is someone told me, well, we need to go down there and see what's, what's coming down the legislative pipeline. We need to be prepared for whatever comes in, so we bring that information back to our schools. And I said, and, and we don't belong to it, and they go, no. So we're depending on you guys to tell us then, right? I mean, when you hear something, you're going to give us a call and say, hey, we know you're not on the Sandapp, so let me tell you what went on. And they go, well, yeah, but it's better if you send your own guy. And I said, okay, so, uh, eventually we'll learn what's coming down the pipeline anyway? Whether we send someone or not? Well, yes, but, you know, not, we, we would be able to be there and have a say. And, and so I go, well, okay, so I, I'll, I'll wait and see. But now, when I, I see our focus, our huge focus is, you know, we've got a lot to do here and, and that means that one or two of us are going to have to be gone. And how can we be gone anymore? We have so many things to do and I, I believe, I'm sure it's important work and I love, I love the idea of being represented, but that means one or two of us are going to be gone to go to, to, to the Capitol or to, you know, to hear all of these things. I just, I just look, this is a very precious time for us as a, as a district, you know, we've just, like we said, we've gone through all these transitions and I think it could be put off just a little bit more, at least. That's, that's what I feel comfortable with, especially when I'm not really sure. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Grunder, I, I guess this, even this flyer is kind of confusing. The flyer says Sanders, but it has a San Bernardino County Superintendent Schools logo on it. What is, what is it, I mean, is the, what is the flyer? Is, is Sandabs part of San Bernardino County Superintendent Schools?
I think they, I think they coordinate it for the county, like they do the community coalition, the joint superintendents, the joint presidents, like the count, like the county coordinates a lot of the joint county effort.
Right, and we'll take a, well, all the teenagers have a motion, but I think the real problem is, is this what I just said, it's not clear. And that's the problem, because you hear people saying, hey, I want access, I want to be able to put comments and they say you can't, so you, you get confused because you see them on here with San Bernardino County Superintendent Schools logo and it's, and the logos there, uh, next to Sandapp, it's confusing. Is it, is it over it or is it under it, is it part of it? And I think that's what the complaints are about. They're saying that somehow it's quasi-official with San Bernardino County Superintendent Schools, but it's not. And maybe over the years it's grown close, so you don't even know what it is in terms of a, an independent body. But all I know is it's controversial and I don't know what the benefit is. And I hear people passionate about telling us we shouldn't participate. So I won't, I won't support it, uh, just because it's, it's not clear to me. I, I, something, I mean, this, putting a document here makes it worse. Cause you have a thing that says Sandads, San Bernardino County District Advocates for Better Schools and then you have the San Bernardino County Superintendent Schools logo on there. I, I don't saw that, that logo can be there, it's confusing. But I understand a motion. No, I think it's. I think, well, we're, in the end, they're looking for a direction of whether or not we're going to support it or not, right? Or, or why is it on here? Well, the, the thing would, the thing to do would be to bring it and agendaize it for approval. Are, are you saying it's not agendaized for approval tonight? Well, we discussed it. All right. Well, that's it, they said they wanted to discuss it. And that'll take us to, and just, just so you know, you know, uh, I, I truly want to get to a point where we want to bring stuff to be agendaized, that a board member asks for it to be agendaized and we get consensus of whether or not it's going to be showed up on the, uh, the agenda. Certain, certain things will be on the agenda that, um, have to be on the agenda in order to take care of business. But items that, uh, that board members want added outside of that, I hope to be totally objective and, and, and bring into the board what individual board members asked for that have consensus of the board to agendaize it. We're not going to agendaize items that we don't have consensus to have agendaized. What I don't like to have happen is for the board to agendaize something only for us to argue about it. That doesn't serve any purpose to me. I'd much rather us, if we have a consensus that we want, now, we could have a consensus to say we want to discuss it, but we're going to have a consensus to say we want to put it on there, knowing that we're going to be having this discussion in that, you know, we, we don't know, but I'm not going to put an item on here that I, I, that I don't have consensus to have on here and it's, and it's controversial because I don't think that benefits the board as a whole or the district. The next item would be action items. And thanks for correcting me, um, twelve point one personnel report.
It's presented.
I'm moved, second.
It moved in second, vote please. Item was approved, twelve point two, appointment of George Bond, Personnel Commission Member.
Second.
It's been moved in second, verse, vote please. Twelve point three, agreement between San Bernardino County and San Bernardino City Fire School District related to Board Discretionary Fund.
I'm a second.
It moved in second, vote please. Twelve point four, approval of the annual and five-year reportable fees report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved in second, vote please. Twelve point five, approval of the first period interim final report as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved in second, vote please. Twelve point six, classified management advanced degree incentive. I had a question, is, we don't have this already? Don't they have, um, extra pay for different degrees?
There is, uh, that incentive for the classified staff, but not management. And so this is for management to take advantage, classified managers to take advantage of that incentive as well.
Okay.
I'm moved, second.
So moves in second, vote please. Action thirteen, consent items, thirteen point one, approval of consent list.
Moved.
So moved in second, any to remove? Any items to remove? Hearing none, vote please. Action fourteen, reports comments by union organizations, fourteen point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association, I think we heard from them earlier. Fourteen point two, California School Employees Association. Fourteen point three, Communication Workers of America.
And they say no report on all of them.
Unfortunately.
Well, actually, CSEA. Uh, good evening, board members, student board members, Superintendent Ariano and Cabinet. My name is Robin Rucker. On behalf of CSEA, we'd like to thank, uh, the district and CSEA negotiations team and the board for passing the re-opener. And a big thank you to the board and whoever took part in allowing this to, uh, uh, classified members to get paid in December. Uh, we really appreciate that, there's really a buzz on campuses and in the air. A special shout out to our payroll team that also helped make that happen. Uh, we're still in negotiations regarding itinerant employees, CSOs and recades. I just want to take a few moments. I just want to take a few moments to shout out our recades. I had the opportunity to work with an amazing group of recades at Highland Pacific while I was helping out at that site. They fill in wherever they, wherever they're needed and whenever they're needed. I'm excited that they're a part of CSCA now, and their recognition and appreciation is long overdue, so I just want to shout them out. Also, CSCA gave $9,000 in scholarships, college scholarships to our members, kids, or grandkids this month. I want to thank our scholarship chairperson, Karina Borsec, and her committee for working with the San Bernardino Community Scholarship Association to select our 2023 scholarship recipients. And CSA, CSCA was also proud to sponsor one of our MNO members who signed up to participate in the MNO Academy. We got a late start in opening our sponsorship up for that event, but next year we hope to offer more scholarships for our MNO Academy. And lastly, we are very excited for our scholars and staff to enjoy this well-deserved break. And you guys have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. 14.3 Communication Workers of, of America.
No comment.
14.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
And no comment.
Thank you. Brings us to Section 15, 15.1 Board Policy 0410 Non-Discrimination in District Programs and Activities. So moved. Be resolved.
I'm sorry. I do have a question on that one. So this one's for 15.1. The, some of the, the language that they do have, the new language, and I was very happy that I had someone from the district call me just to clarify a few things. But I honestly would like for the, the policy committee to look at this because they're actually removing language. If we look at the areas that are crossed, it feels like there's language being removed that's maybe not necessary. So I would love to have the, the board policy just to make sure that we're not removing what's crucial, because I know our district has always been in a position where we want to make sure we're, we're clear. And we want to add language, and we want to set protections, additional protections to our students, to, to our staff, and, and so forth. So I just want to make sure if we can have this, my suggestion would be to have this sent to the board policy, just to make sure that we're, we're not removing necessary language.
The question becomes this, was the, were the policies
No.
changes made because of laws that changed?
Okay, so I'm not totally expert on every one of these, but I do know they were changed for mandated language. And when I was looking at them, it looks like they split the language up into different policies and into a regulation.
Which one of the assistant suits, this, this under?
I have a little bit of information on this. So CSBA gave us the required language so that we can clear our FPM audit. And so this is the language that was required for us to place in there, so it's mandated.
You mentioned the audit. What type of audit?
FPM, Federal Program Monitoring.
And we didn't clear the audit before?
There were some findings, outdated policies, and this was one of them. So we made the adjustment so that we can clear those findings.
You say, California School Board Association, they have a lawyer, or?
Yeah, so they, they have policy updates and requirements, and this is one of them. They send it, this is what you need in the board policy, and we follow suit. We don't make any changes to that. It's mandated.
Is there room for modification, like that, Ms. Rosales Medina wants to do?
In my experience, there have been considerations, but we have never changed it from CSBA's actual requirements.
We have, so in past times.
That I'm aware of.
Yeah, so California School Boards Association, remember, this is an organization that comes with their, with also their recommendations from what the language is. In one case, we had an issue with our undocumented students, and they were suggesting a certain language that we and the district, the policy committee, added
Hold on one second.
additional language to protect.
Hold on one second. I'm going to help you out. Is there any, is there any time constraints on this?
If we were to take it back to the sub-policy committee, we just have to update our federal program monitors and make sure that they give us approval. Um, and talking to my colleague here, we might be able to add language above and beyond.
That's what, yeah.
But not change any of the recommended.
Let's do this. It, I'll just entertain a motion to approve this, Ms. Rosales Medina, with the thought that you're going to review it and then find ways, if you can, if you have concerns, you could bring back the proposed modifications at a later date. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. But so for 15.3, because 15.1 is, is some language.
Right now, we can talk about 15.3 when we get there.
Okay, so that.
I move that we approve 15.1 and refer it to the policy subcommittee.
Okay, it's been moved to approve.
I can't.
Vote, please. 15.2 Board Policy.
Excuse me, um, Ms. Tobias.
15.2 Board Policy 1312.3 Uniform Complaint Procedures. Be resolved. The Board Education adopts Board Policy 1312.3 Uniform Complaint Procedures. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Been moved to approve.
Second.
In second. Vote, please. 15.3 Board Policy 5145.3 Non-Discrimination Harassment.
Move to approve and refer to the policy.
This is where I would like to kind of post, uh, pull, or to have it, at least, I wouldn't want to support in voting on this one, because this one has a lot of drastic changes, which removes, you know, even what the, what the idea of the term bullying means. And, you know, we, we set additional protections. Compared to the other one, this one is a little bit more where they're generalizing the language versus, you know, in our district, we want to make sure we add language to protect. This one I wouldn't even support in, in voting on it.
And I'll move to refer to policy.
Yes.
Question. Let me just get clarification. What was the reason for the changes in this policy?
All, all three of these policies were based on AB 1078, the governor, what she approved back in September as an urgency bill. So most of these changes on here are all from that 1078.
Then, who, is this in your area of?
Non-Discrimination harassment, yes, we, we take care of that.
And, and was, the language came from where? Was it California School Board Association again?
Same. Um, and through the FPM audit, some of the language was outdated and old, and this will get us into compliance.
And were we out of compliance prior to these changes?
Yes.
Are there consequences to being out of compliance?
There is. Go ahead.
FPM looks at, as part of our federal funding that we receive. So technically, the CDE could withhold Title I funding from the district. It's an extreme measure, but it, but it is a possibility. This is a finding that happened almost two years ago that we're trying to clear.
And my only point is this, I'm all for changing, but there's consequences that could be associated with it. You know, if we get dinged for not getting funded because somebody said that we didn't change the policy, then that's serious. So.
Suggesting we remove the, I'm just saying that we do not remove everything they crossed out. So if you look at the areas the district crossed out, bullying, the meaning, you look at sexual harassment, you know, what that means. They removed a lot of the language that wasn't necessarily needed to be removed.
She, Ms. Rosales Medina said it wasn't necessary. Was it necessary to cross out the items that were crossed out? Why were they crossed out?
Thank you. So we, that district didn't actually cross them out. It, they came required amendments or revisions. So this is the language that was forwarded to us from CSBA and through the FPM audit, so we have to follow suit. Yes.
Oh, it's the same thing. It's all about a vote. But I would suggest that we vote for the changes and then move to make changes to it later that we're allowed to make to ensure that we're not put in a predicament where we can be sanctioned because we don't have the proper policy. There's no, there's no consequence to changing it. There is a consequence to not changing it. Because you're out of compliance if you don't change it. So I understand your concern, uh, Ms. Rosales Medina.
But I'd like to see the language, though, that says that. But that's fine. We can, if you, if, I think the, the motion was removed, but if someone goes ahead and motions it, I just would like to see the actual language that says what the audit is. And just to make sure.
I'm all for that. What I'm looking for tonight is for someone to make a motion to approve this. If I can get it approved, and then after we get it approved, then I'm willing to make sure they get with Ms. Rosales Medina.
I can provide that information.
To make any changes that she wants to see, to have them come back to us once we bring in, maybe our own legal counsel to look at it, to say, look at the requirements and move forward. But I'm looking for someone to move in a second to approve this tonight.
Well, before you move and approve, this is discussion, right?
That's right.
Okay, so, can I go?
Yes.
So, so I guess the only concern that, that I'm hearing and that I would have as well is when they provide the language, we basically substitute, right? So we take what they give us and then we just replace. So I, I think I would agree. And my only concern with approving right now, although I understand the, you know, the need or necessity or urgency, is that this gets forgotten. So as long as we don't forget about it, and as long as it comes back to the board, because once approved, there really isn't a need to bring it back. So just keeping that in mind, this is something that we would like to look over.
Do, Ms. Tobias.
Thank you.
Work with Karen, Ms. Cunningham.
Ms. Mrs. Mary Ellen Grande.
Motion to approve.
Moved in second. We can still have discussion. Do I have a second?
It's, I'd like to second with an amendment.
Okay.
To also refer to policy.
I had somebody, oh, you're next, so you get to talk.
Yeah. I, yeah, I would second it with, but I'd also like to refer to the policy. I think some of this might be in other places in our policy, because I think there's a place in the, in the, in the student section that talks about the Bullying and Electronic Act because of expulsions and suspension. So I think we need to also check to see if some of this isn't also duplicative in other places in our policy. So that's part of why I want to have it referred, because there may be some things we may need to add into this, but there may be other places where this would either fit or may also, it may already be in there. We have so much policy, sometimes it's hard to remember, but the bullying definition stuck in my head, and the electronic act stuck in my head. It's seemingly at somewhere else in policy and, under the student section.
This is Alexander.
Thank you. Just in alignment with Nikki just said, if we could just reference where that policy is in this particular one, then I think that would satisfy the concern related to the meanings that have been deleted.
Well, let me say this. I know the reason why they made the changes is because you know you can get the, you feel comfortable that the changes you're receiving from the California School Board Association is probably standard, and all districts are going to use them, and it's been approved, and they know that it's going to pass the audit. If you choose not to do that, then what you're going to do is have us bring in lawyers, have them look at the requirements, and then have them talk with our board members about the concerns they have, and then they can tell you where you can make the changes. This is just a cheat way of doing it. You bring in the lawyers, you know, $1,000 an hour. I'm, I'm fine with spending the money, but I'm just saying, when you bring in the lawyers, now you're bringing in the experts in this area to help you make the changes that will allow you to still be in compliance. And they're still going to tell you what you can change and can't change based on the law, right? But I, but I will encourage the district to make sure we're in compliance and then work on making the changes. I don't think you want to be out of compliance and be looking at making changes when you, then you have exposure because you know you're out of compliance.
But all I'm saying is just maybe just reference what that policy is, so there's a linkage in case someone pulls this document, they know where to go, so we're covered too. Is that possible?
We can do anything that we need to do to make sure, when, before we put it on a gamut, that it has that. That's not, that's not an issue.
Right. I'm not saying not vote on it, just if we could just make that change, so.
Everyone's going to have to do it. He said he can do it.
Yeah.
And I, I just want to mention that it's not where I'm saying we can't add the legal language we have to if it's coming from the state. When it comes from CSBA, and it's not coming directly from the state, because right now it's, CSBA has two different groups, that's like, that feels more political, that, you know, they're trying to come up with language. I want to make sure it's coming from the state or from the federal government, and that we're using the language. But we can also add within it. We don't have to necessarily wait, approve this, and then add the language. We could do that simultaneously. I think in the future, when we're doing policy, we can make sure that the, the policy committee is aware of what's going on. So we can make sure that when it's coming to the board, it already has that additional language that has already been reviewed. In this case, I would support that we add the link. I just feel that there's a lot of language that didn't necessarily need to be crossed that is actually adding additional protections for our students here. And we've always had that in our district to make sure that we're, we're adding extra protections. So, just letting you know that.
And it, but it all comes down to there's changes to the law. In order for us to be in compliance, when the laws take place, we have to have policies in place that are in compliance with those laws. Either you take it from a group like this, or you have your own lawyers help you make the changes that will ensure that you're in compliance.
Have done that before.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And we have done that before.
And we're going to do that, we'll prove it this way, but then bringing in lawyers to work with us about the, when you're going to suggest, I don't know why this line wasn't changed. They're going to look at the law and say, okay, you're right. You don't relate to say this way, you can say it a different way. But you, you, the only way to do this is have a lawyer tell you that.
Yeah, like the sexual harassment one. It doesn't make any sense why they removed it, you know.
Well, it makes sense. They, somebody crossed the line out for a reason.
No, I mean, they're, so they're, they're generalized the language, but what I'm saying is there's no reason.
I'm not arguing that you don't like it. I'm just saying, somebody said cross this line out for a reason. And I'm assuming, he said we were out of compliance, so the lines we had in there made us out of compliance. So the changes put us in compliance. But we have a, a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second to approve this, knowing that we're going to bring it back. That's right. Correct. Thank you very much. A call for the vote, please. And, and just, I know, I want to say this upfront. I'm just trying to move it and, you know, because some people take me the wrong way, you know what I mean? I'm a nice guy.
Ms. Tobias, Ms. Grande.
I know my tone sometimes, you know, that's from the streets of San Bernardino. That's where the tone comes from.
It happens to all of us.
Thank you, Abby, because you get, you get the same way. You scare me sometimes. All right, so now we're at Board Member Comments. And, uh, is it a list on here? I know. There's no list, so I'll start with Ms. Husky.
So start from the furthest to the right, so I'm like, oh, good, I have time to wait. Um, okay, thank you. So first, I'd like to say congratulations, Mr. Tillman, on being elected to our board presidency. I, you have done us proud in, in, in your 20 million years here on the board. I had no idea what we were creating back then, but I'm very proud of you. You've done San Bernardino well. Congratulations also to my seatmate, Ms. Tobias. I will miss you. You're moving a seat away from me, but I am excited for you as well. And I'd also like to echo our congratulations to Jaden Daniels on his Heisman. Many of you know that I live for Saturday mornings. I, Saturdays in the fall, I wake up at 6:00 a.m. to watch College Game Day. And so I've been following this all season long. I followed him from, you know, Arizona State to LSU, and so I'm really excited for him. Thank you, Danny, for your kind words around the student board members. I, I was funny because I was wondering what they were going to. I, I was funny, because I was wondering what they were going to say tonight about their trip, and they missed so much about what happened that day, and Antonio, like, he's very, very shy, like extremely painfully shy. And he was trying to tell the story of how they all practiced with him so that he would be able to network, and he did. He got out and talked with the students from, and, you know, from around the state. And they were also proud of him, and I was proud of him as well, because it was so far out of his comfort zone. But they were so excited to tell me the story, and I wish they, they'd been able better to do. But first off, they were, everybody was impressed with our nine board members. And they spread them out around the room, and so, you know, they kept going, another one from San Bernardino, another one from San Bernardino. So when they got to the, you know, the end of the morning, beginning of the afternoon session, they asked them, they said, okay, tell us one word that reminded you that you, that, you know, impacted you from the morning. And several of the students said San Bernardino, that were from other districts, and everybody cheered. Because we had prepared, the, the kids were all like, you already trained us on some of this stuff. Like, we were able to help teach other students about what is LCAP, you know? How do you read a board agenda? And so they really did make their mark on them, and I'm just so proud of their leadership, and I really want to thank Ms. Nicole Post and Mr. Ken Martinez for chaperoning. They, they, they put together a remarkable agenda for them, they got to ride the trolley, they got to go to Fisherman's Wharf and, and Pier 39, as well as attending and, you know, doing that. And as you heard from Antonio, this, you know, this was something very new, and hopefully we'll have an opportunity to share some pictures, but there's one picture of Ann Jeanette on the trolley with a smile that I, when Nicole sent it to me, I said, this is why we do what we do. Like, the look on her face, that sheer joy, this is why we do what we do. So again, thank you guys very much, because I know that was a lot of work. But I appreciate you for stepping up and, and helping our kids have this opportunity, and thank you to the board for fulfilling my dream. Next year, we'll have one from each high school, hopefully, because that's what the plan for the nine is. So these guys are really piloting and helping us create that. I'd also like to, from this, our, our trip, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Marlene Barkandova and her team on winning the Golden Bell for their undercover anti-bullying and other restorative programs that really work on, on that. They've done something really good there, and I did that. It was an amazing, amazing time in San Francisco, it was my first CSBA education conference. I agree with you, Ms. Ariano, Mr. Ginright was something else, like he, he spoke to me like no, no, no one has in a long time that's been a speaker. And I, you know, I'm really, was excited about that. The other speaker that I saw that I really would like to see us, hear more from was Brendan Nicholson. He talked about his Hidden Genius Program in Oakland, working with young African-American males. I'd just like to know, see if we could get some more on what he's doing. And just to kind of see how it compares to what we're doing, and if there's something maybe we can learn from him to bring into, into our Sankofa, into our, into our ETSA program. I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, because we're in the middle of Hanukkah right now. Happy Kwanzaa, whatever you celebrate, ready for a new year and new adventures. And just to say that I've kind of been out of it for the last week, so I apologize to all the people that I didn't respond to. But I have a brand-new grandson, Declan Boe was born on Wednesday, and so I was up taking care of grandson number one, who was two, and yeah, I didn't answer phones or do anything, I just played trucks and went to playgrounds. So thank you all for just being so supportive. This has been a blessing, this is my one-year anniversary of being on the board. And it's been an amazing experience, and thank you, Mr. Ariano, for agreeing to come back and really making this an exciting time for San Bernardino. It's a great place, we are San Bernardino strong, we are going to shine, and you are a big part of that reason, so thank you.
Hi. Ms. Sabios?
Thank you so much, good evening. Just kind of along the same lines, I want to also congratulate Jaden Daniels and his family, you know, on that amazing achievement and obviously making us proud. I don't have the pleasure of meeting him personally, but hopefully, you know, I do, maybe at that parade. Also, I want to thank Supervisor Baca for the continued partnership support. We are going to definitely utilize those funds to, you know, provide that health, health, health center for, for Indian Springs, and I want to thank personally Dr. Rodriguez for, you know, making that possible. I also want to congratulate Positive Youth Development, Marlene Barkandova, but specifically also Michelle Myers and Stephanie Fletcher, and I think they have a third member to their team that I haven't yet met, but congratulations to them for winning the SB, CSBA Golden Bell Award. I was so, so sad to not be able to be there, but it is what it is. But congratulations, in spirit, I was, I was there, and I was very, very happy for them, since I am a supporter of their program. Also, I want to, also take the moment to thank Mickey, I, I know, Ms. Chahusky, when, when we, when we, when I first got on the board, we didn't have board members, and I know that before, student board members, and I know that before that, we only had, I think, one or two board members, and I know that this board was very committed to bring at least seven, because we wanted to expand the opportunity to more students. So we, we wanted to each have kind of like our own, to be able to provide that opportunity to more students. I don't know how it ended up being nine, but, you know, I'm glad that it did. You know, hearing the amazing time and, you know, the opportunities and experiences that they, you know, are having and that they were able to have at CSBA really just fills my heart with joy. You know, thank you to Nicole and Mr. Martinez again for, you know, just supporting them in that way as well. And to Ms. Chahusky, because she has taken the bulk of that work, which I truly appreciate personally, so, so thank you for that. And then also, lastly, thank you to, you know, the presentations that were provided tonight. Also to Superintendent Ariano for, you know, showing us, you know, kind of our current state and acknowledging the previous work, and really just in a very calm and peaceful and humbling way, just helping us all work, you know, in that direction. I, I've, I've been very excited, and I continue to be very excited. I think that one of the most exciting things for me personally is and has been just really getting back to that humbling place, right? Serving with humility, I think it's really important, like not being afraid to, like I said, make mistakes and, you know, say it's okay, you know, where are we at? And the fact that you've been able to do that and are doing that with Cabinet and are sharing with us, you know, the tremendous growth, you know, that, that you're seeing and that they're making, like, it just makes me feel really, really proud of them and of our team. And again, it just really gives me a lot of enthusiasm in, in, in where our district is headed in that regard. And I have no doubt that we will be a stellar institution of academic, of academic, you know what I mean, performance, thank you. So yeah, with that, I want to wish everybody happy holidays as well, whatever it is you celebrate, Christmas, Hanukkah, and a Happy New Year. I will see you all next year in January.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Vice President, I mean, President Tillman now, sorry about that. And I said I would make my comments earlier, but just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone, and thank you, sir.
Thank you. And Mrs. Mary Ellen Abigail Grande.
Okay, it's been a while since I've spoken about my subacute project, and I just want you to know, I've been hard at work. I have at least eight pieces of research that comes from, come from very notable resources, and I have engendered a great deal of interest in several significant people. So let me just read to you a nutshell, okay? And I have two things to ask at the end. Systemic segregation of children and youth with chronic and long-term, long-term disabilities occur in every hospital. It has always been so and will remain as long as no one cares to look at it. The one-hour students receive with a teacher per day is meant to count as a full day's attendance, and not meant as equity in educational experiences. What is, that we said equity lends as a foundation? Well, this is it, right here I'm looking at. The ed code clearly states home and hospital designations are meant for temporary disabilities with an end date indicated in the IP, and specifically, it states it is not to be used for students with exceptional needs. And yet, we do use it, we always have used it, we still continue. I ask that we use equity lends as a foundation for these children and this issue. We do not have equity for these students in facilities, in teaching, and providing a learning environment along with a clinical environment. And I am here to sound the alarm on what is ahead for our students, who will soon be identified and designated with mental health needs, general education students. They will leave their homes and school sites to be placed in a rehab or hospital setting where their education will be placed on hold. And right now, hospitals are clearing out storerooms, janitors' closets, anywhere they can place a bed for our general education students with hopefully temporary mental health needs. There will be no facilities for these students either. I have spoken to Tony Thurman, and he agreed with me. He gave me his card and told me to call him, and we would talk about it. We must do more, and Eloise Reyes, she, I also talked to her, she said she would help promote the change and/or greater clarity with Tony Thurman. Further, she has the ear of our new speaker, Robert Rivas, and our legislation, legislative member to CSBA is happy and ready to promote change, because the problem is perhaps found in the interpretation of the ed code. Further, we must recognize that the federal block grants language itself states that children's hospital for long-term must offer everything that the student needs or the child needs, including education alongside both clinical and home environment. And there it is, it is we, school districts, and our hospitals and rehab centers, hospitals who are not providing it. We must build a children and youth school hospital, hospital school, that offers classrooms, teacher space, furnishing, and teacher supplies equitable to what all children currently have. So stay tuned, and I have one more thing. I request information on what our current agreement is with the hospital and our relationship. I think I spoke to you, Terry, about it, and you're going to look into that for me. And next, the Subacute Director has in fact given me an open invitation, when I am ready, that she would set up a meeting with the Common Spirit and Dignity Health, who have just recently merged, and, and have an ask ready. The end. Merry Christmas to everyone, thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Abigail Rosales Medina.
I'd definitely like to say happy holidays to everyone, which Christmas, Kwanzaa, we have Hanukkah, there's so many great events going on. I do want to, want to find out, as maybe an ask, many years ago, when my children were still small, and I believe many families were going through the recession and didn't have any funding to buy their own children toys. And so I remember through an elementary school program, there was a pamphlet being sent out, and I just want to follow up to see if we're actually, whatever the organizations, or maybe those organizations where our students or families or parents are able to sign up for a toy. I know that year saved my children, because that was the one gift I got delivered in front to my doorsteps, and I quickly wrapped them up and put under the tree, and that's what was that one gift. We don't know where family circumstances are, and so that pamphlet or paper that was given to the schools, to our students at the schools, helped me fill it out and then submit it, and, and, you know, that was our, that was our blessing and our gift. I just want to follow up with the district to see if we're doing something like that similar. If we are, that's great, maybe we want to highlight it, maybe we can get more contributions to those programs through, at least recognizing what they're helping us, our students with and families with. And that's basically it, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Felicia Alexander.
Thank you. Well, I'll first start off with my congratulations to President Tillman and Vice President Sabios on your appointment today, and thank Dr. Scott Wyatt for his presidency. And just, I want to start off with, I think the last time we met, because we haven't met since November, and we had a very successful San Bernardino Turkey Trot, it was our ninth year. And I want to put a special shout-out to the students that came out to support. So we had students from Pacific High School, from Cajon High School, even the track teams that participated, middle, college, high school primarily, because they prepare for the LA Marathon. So for the past five years in particularly, they have been coming to our race and building up their stamina to participate in the LA Marathon. So I want to just put a shout-out to all the students and also staff members that came out to support. We had over 800 people, so very proud and happy. So hopefully you all will come next year, because you'll have fun, I promise you. Congratulations to Jaden Daniel, really proud, you know, just to have someone from our city, but just to be able to, also for him and his family, a lot of pride there. Couple other updates, CSBA, I also attended, I thought it was great, congratulations to the youth development team, and Dr. Sandra Rodriguez as the leader, so, great job. I attended the Barbershop Apprenticeship graduation, thought that was great. What I found really interesting about the graduations is that each graduate spoke about their experience. And they had a speech about either talking about just overall hygiene being a barber, to their experience of just starting their own business. Their leaders are all barbers, and it was just a great experience and a lot of pride in the room. And then when Mary Ellen and I were walking out, we, we ran into a student who had just passed his GED, and he was very excited. So that was just awesome as well. Congratulations to Chief Polino for being a keynote speaker for Phi Delta Kappa, the breakfast brunch this past weekend, and also to our ETSA program under Anna Applegate, under the leadership of Dr. Greer, so they received an award as well. That was a really good event to attend, and then I also attended the Black Party with Abigail. That was a collective collaboration between ICUC, as well as People's Collective. So the first Black Party, a lot of people were out there, and a lot of great energy. I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge San Bernardino Symphony as well, because I don't think we've met since they gave us an award for our Community Partnership Award. And then, in addition to that, thank you Superintendent Ariano and Terry Komnick for the presentations today. They were detailed and they made sense to us. So thank you for those specifics, and a lot of pride to instill in terms of the progress that you shared, so thank you. And then I don't want to forget the fact that the last time we met, we talked about the test scores that aren't good representation for our African-American students, and I just don't want us to forget the fact that we still need to make sure we invite Dr. Greer back to figure out, to present to the community what we're doing to address those concerns. And then lastly, happy holidays to everybody, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to thank my fellow board members for having accomplished me, for nominating me and voting me in as your president, and I appreciate it, and I I've done enough times to know the responsibility that is involved in it, and I'm up to the task, and I look forward to working with you all. I want to thank the superintendent. I know you had a question about making sure the numbers go up, but this is the first superintendent I've seen commit to realistic goals with the 50-50-95, I have the numbers memorized, and moving towards those numbers. And so I thank you for having the courage to commit to that. That's a big deal, and I know we've had some discussion about your ideas of how you're going to get there, and that means a lot. And it's going to benefit a lot of students that we're making that commitment. I know we do a whole host of other things, and we benefit kids in countless ways, other than the numbers that we see on the paper, but the numbers are still important. And I think this is a perfect time to say, we're doing all those other things, but we're also going to ensure that the academic performance and rigor is there, and we can do it. So I, I thank you for that, and I look forward to. So I, I thank you for that. And I look forward to uh, uh, working together to make sure that it happens. And with that, uh, go to superintendent staff.
Good evening. The first.
He passed, so we're, we're at the summary of board members' requests.
Good evening. The first request is from Ms. Rosales Medina and Ms. Alexander. They're requesting to schedule a policy subcommittee to review policy 0410 and 5145.3 and review mandated language and link the language that was omitted if it is to be found in another policy or AR. The second request is from Ms. Grande. She requests information in the current agreement with district and community hospital, and Mr. Comnick is to follow up on that. The third request is from Ms. Rosales Medina. She's requesting information and services or pamphlet available for students or families to receive gifts. The last request is from Ms. Alexander, um, requesting to bring Dr. Greer back to speak about how we are addressing concerns about African-American student achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Again.
It's been moved and second, and we will adjourn. Thank you.